Okay, well, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Directors, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District on Monday, May 18, 2020, at 5:15 regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Director Edwards?
Yeah.
Director Byrne? Director Riley?
Here.
Director Evans?
Here.
Director Hoffman?
Here.
Director Adams?
Here.
And Director Potter?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Any luck?
Can we all please stand for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any additions and corrections to the agenda at this time?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Okay, oral communication. Anyone wish to address the board on consent calendar, information item, closed session item, or matters not listed on the agenda may do so only during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented to the board. Oral communications are open.
Please use the raise your hand icon if you have any comments. If you are calling in, please press star nine. All right. Chair Edwards, I do see several persons who would like to comment.
Okay, they have three minutes. Thank you.
All right, just a moment. I want to get your timer up. Okay, caller, I have a caller, please identify yourself.
Hi, this is John Tilly.
Hello, John, yes.
Thank you, I have the floor.
Yes, you do, please present your comment.
You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm speaking to the closed session item. This is in regard to the letters that were crafted to the M1W board and some of the brouhaha that has resulted from this, and that's what I'm calling it about in particular. That's why I want to comment. I would like to ask in particular that item 17 is tonight's agenda. We move to the beginning of the meeting so the greatest number of public participants can witness what is being attempted. There was a letter written by Director Hoffman to M1W, and Mr. Hoffman specifically wrote that he is a district board member who is offering a personal apology, differentiating that it was a personal communication. This talk was covered at length in the district December 17th, December 16th meeting, which I'm grateful to say is on YouTube, and if people haven't looked at YouTube for the district, they will be, I'm sure, tonight. During that conversation, Mr. Stolt said that he thinks that board members have every right to speak as an individual and as a director, in quotes, saying, "I am a member of the district, but I'm speaking as an individual to organizations like the California Coastal Commission." Mr. Stolt also said, "It is your option to say what you want to say and how you want to say it." Later in the conversation, Mr. Stolt said that, "When speaking to external groups, board members should say, 'I am a board member and I'm speaking as an individual.'" Director Byrne followed that by saying, "I think that as long as it is perfectly clear the person is not representing the board as a whole, that's the key issue." Director Edwards said, "If you want to go up there and say you are speaking as an individual, you can do it." Director Riley was misreading the motion, and Director Byrne provided clarification by reading the motion, which was, "Board members should clarify that they are speaking as an individual and not on behalf of the board as a whole when they make or are written statements regarding water matters." Director Riley then said, "Oh, I see," and see his expression of concern, followed right away by Director Edwards saying, "That's what I did at the Coastal Commission." Director Edwards, this is not in the least bit what you did at the Coastal Commission. What you said at the Coastal Commission was, "Good afternoon, I am Director Alvin Edwards, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, One Seaside. There was zero mention that your views were expressed were personal." Also, at the Coastal Commission, Director Riley introduced himself, and I quote, "I am an elected member to the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District Board of Directors," and in no way at all stated that his comments were personal or not that of the entire board. I would suggest that people go to YouTube and put in George Riley, California Coastal Commission, to see that exact testimony. Alvin Edwards also appears in a three hour and 42 minutes clip at 46 minutes and 45 seconds, you can see exactly what I'm talking about. They both launched into comments that might as well have been pulled directly from the Public Water Now website, and I do not believe that any way she performed it represented the board, and it just is infuriating that that is going to be allowed, and it just is completely wrong. If anyone should be censured for the public comments...
Mr. Tilly? You're turning this up. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Paul, please identify as Paul B. Sir, can you please identify yourself?
This is Paul Bruno, and I believe I was just practicing raising my hand earlier, so let me practice unwaving it, but thank you for calling upon me. We'll talk later.
Thank you. I have another... Okay, I have a call in. Please identify yourself.
So, Arlene?
Yes, hi, Genie.
So, this is Director Byrne, and so I have no access to the computer, and it looks like as an attendee, I'm on mute, so I have no participation. So, I'm going to hang up, and somebody needs to get me on the webex.
Okay, that's fine, Genie, I can make you a participant if you don't mind.
Okay, I'm not going to be able to see any of the agenda that shows up.
All right, thank you, Genie.
So, how do I, how do I speak unless I do star nine?
I am going to, I am going to make you a participant, and that should enable you to speak without pressing star nine. I will need to go back to a different screen in order to do that.
So, is there any way to get me on the computer?
Yeah, I can't do that from here.
So, shall I hang up and try the computer one more time, because it's not going through?
And Director Potter shows up as a panelist, but claims he does not have video and is muted, even though it doesn't show up as mute on the participant screen.
All right, if, would you like? All right, I'm going to go back to my different screen.
So, I don't think you guys can hear me anyway.
Yes, we can hear you.
Ah-huh, miracle.
Director Potter.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I've got, I'm fine, I've got the agenda printed out, so I'm okay.
So, I'll just use the printed agenda, but I'm going to put it on speakerphone, which is kind of hard to hear, but...
All right.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, and I'm going to change you... Change role to, oh, I can't do anything here. All right, if you would not, I'm going to complete this public comment. Let's see, here we go, all right.
Really? Good idea.
All right, Genie, I'm going to change you to a panelist.
And if I want to speak, I just call to the chair.
Yes, if you could, put your hand down, that may make it easier for me to change your, change you to a panelist.
Who?
So, that would just be, press star nine again, please.
Star nine?
Star nine, thank you.
So, how do I mute myself?
You could do, you're participating by phone also, you can do star nine, or I can mute you, just a moment. I have just muted you, and I cannot make Genie a panelist. Genie, I am unsuccessful changing your status.
So, in order to speak, I need to do the star nine?
Yes. You can likely just keep your mic open. Just keep your mic open, Genie.
Arlene, this is Director Evans. It appears that Paul B. is still, is not muted.
Oh, shit, I was making...
There, all right. I know. I want one. All right, I'm going to take public comment from Mr. Dobby.
Go ahead, Mr. Dobby, you have three minutes.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Dobby?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you. Please present your comment.
Okay, this is Jeff Dobby, and I'm speaking as an individual. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity. I would like to echo the comments of John Tilly and encourage you to move item 17 to a much more forward point in the agenda. It seems to me that is something that we all should be a part of. I mean, I'll stick around if I have to, but it would lose a lot of people if we wait that long. And normally, when these things have come up in the past, I know in November, the discussion that centered around the speaking at the Coastal Commission came up during the directors' reports on their activities, which is well in the beginning of the agenda, so it seems to me that we ought to address this sooner than later, and I would like to have you move it forward if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right, I'm going on to the next speaker. Tammy Jennings, please proceed with your comment.
My name is Tammy Jennings in Monterey. I just want to say that maybe, I don't know if this is possible, but it would be nice if the board could have all of this Corona virtual thing squared away, and that everybody's on the same page, because it's now a half an hour into the meeting, and there are still problems. Anyway, that's all I want to say, is maybe take time outside of the meeting time to fix these problems. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, thank you for listening to the public comments here. I just want to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about the recent vote by the Waste Management, Water Waste Management Board, to essentially go against their prior recommendations for certifying the CIR. And I would just like to say that Hoffman really went against his mandate by sending out a letter to Monterey One Water that really went against the initial agreement with the rest of the board, and as a resident from Carmel Valley, who is very concerned about the overdrafting of the Carmel River, I really think that we need to make sure that we have an additional option here for water outside of the ridiculously expensive desal plant that Cal Am is trying to ramrod through. This is really essential that Hoffman be censured, and frankly, I just don't think he has any of our interests at heart, least of which Carmel and Carmel Valley. So, if the board would kindly consider censuring Mr. Hoffman, we, and I speak not just for myself here, but actually for my father.
Ma'am, I'm fine, ma'am, I'm going to have to cut off, because that's on the agenda, and we got to get to it.
Okay, okay, with respect, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bye-bye.
All right.
And if everyone would please put, select your hands, your raised hands icon, so that that icon would come down to indicate that you have already spoken. Thank you. And Chair Edwards, I see no other speakers.
Thank you, Arlene. Let's move the agenda to the consent calendar. Do anyone wish to have anything, board members wish to have anything for a form consent?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Well, let's find out if the public have, anyone from the public want to move anything from the consent calendar.
Just a moment, Chair, I'm checking to see if there are, if anyone...
Okay.
No, Ms. Folsom, your hand is raised again. Did you want to comment on a consent calendar item?
No, ma'am, I do not. Let me go ahead and lower this. Sorry, this is one of my first usages of the Cisco.
I understand, we understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, there are no public comments.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair, you made a motion?
Director Byrne made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by Vice Chair, checked by Director Riley. Roll call, please.
Director Evans? Director Hoffman? Director Adams?
I'm so sorry, aye, if you're saying Adams.
Yes, thank you. Director Potter?
Aye.
I believe Potter is still in the mix.
I am. I'm still here, but I've been muted.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes, W. Vera.
Thank you, motion passes, W. Vera. Next item, General Manager.
They'll try to be brief. Arlene's going to bring up the presentation.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
This is Director Evans. I apologize, I've just been notified that there was somebody who had intended to speak at public comment, had their star nine done, and did not get called on. Is there a way to go back?
Mr. Laredo, can we go back?
In these uncertain times, I would say yes.
Thank you, sir. Let's bring her up, Arlene, if we can find her.
Yes, we'd be happy to.
Oral communications are open.
All right, I'm checking again for anyone who has a raised hand. I see no raised hands. Please be sure that you are dialing star nine, and you should hear a prompt.
And that's just for a telephone connection.
Yes, I'm getting the indication from this person that they're, they did star nine, and they do not have a prompt.
Okay, I do not see them on the list. Is it, let's see, I can try to unmute, I will go to our list of participants, and I can unmute the persons one by one who have called, called in. That's the only way that I could do that, so I will. Did you have a comment? Thank you. Do you have a comment? Thank you. Do you have a comment? Do you have a comment? Thank you. Hello, do you have a comment? 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 Yes.
She said she's going to leave and come back.
All right, thank you.
So, she's not getting any, she's not getting any, nobody's replying, she's not getting anything, just a bunch of echoes, no prompts, so she's going to hang up and come back.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for your efforts.
Okay, so we are, General Manager Stolt, I will bring up your PowerPoint.
So, the resource system as a whole, you can see that actual production is beneath the target for the river and over the target for the coastal, and we're going to say the subareas, the seaside groundwater basin, but all in, in total, we're 57 acre feet below budget, which is a good thing. Next page. Looking at table 13, Sand City and ASR recovery, we have quite a bit of water in the ground for ASR, but we've not recovered any yet. The plan is to begin doing so with the next few months. You should note that Sand City produced 23 acre feet in the month, it just closed out, which is a positive. And next chart, this is delivery for customer service. The interesting thing that happened here is, we're, as you can see, the difference in the bottom right two numbers is 36 acre feet, that we are over for the year-to-date, but at the end of last month, we were 153 acre feet over compared to last year, which means in the last month, we made up 117 acre feet. That would be a byproduct of both shelter-in-place rules, which likely increase residential consumption, which is about 2/3 of all demand in the system, but keep in mind that we did have rains in April, the impact of which can't fully be separated out from the shelter-in-place, so the rain would reduce irrigation, and, you know, the combination of the two does show that in fact, demand was down for the month of April. Next chart. Monthly recorded rainfall, there you can see the blue bar in April was above normal through the year-to-date, we're at about 85% of the long-term average, just over 17 and 1/3 inches. That's very likely to leave us for the year at normal or below normal. Next one, Arlene. There we go. The red line is the cumulative rainfall, and this was put out this morning. You can see just a little tiny, tiny dot right over the word May, and that accounts for the rains that we just surprisingly had yesterday and this morning. So, anyway, we're about, as I mentioned, 17.4 inches for the year. Next chart. Unimpaired flow, there too, April was above normal. We're currently at 64% of year-to-date long-term average, but where we're at with the remaining stream flow that we're going to see, we're very likely to be in the normal category when the year ends. It'll be the low end of the normal category, but it was not nearly as bad as we thought it was when November had no rain. And then finally, the last chart. And then finally, the last chart. The ASR season is over. We finished at 916 and 1/2 acre feet injected, which is really remarkable, given that we had basically two full months of the season with no rainfall. I think 916 is probably our fourth best year ever. We had 2,345 in our best year ever, and then 1117 and 1111, I believe, were the others, so not bad. Would have benefited from a little more steady rainfall, which we didn't get, but looked pretty good. And with that, I can take any questions.
Any more questions at this time? No more questions? General Manager, what's next?
Just a couple of brief updates on water supply projects. I wanted to give you a glimpse of what's going on over at the aquifer storage and recovery site for the chemical building and wrap up on the reclamation project tank. There we go, next slide. So this is the installation underground manifold head that was dropped in place recently. Next slide. It's about 30 feet from the north entrance. Here you can see scope of scale compared to a human, getting it ready for backfilling, cross top, next slide. And here, they're starting to fill the trench back in. And then over at the building. Next slide. They're dropping in concrete roof panels. And as you pull away and look back at the building, next slide. It's currently kind of a boxy-looking thing, but when all the fit and finish is done, it'll match up with our other building on the site with that kind of traditional Spanish style. But you can see it's coming together, all three bays are right there. And you can see the back push pit kind of in front of it. So making progress, looking pretty good on both projects. This is the reclamation project tank rehabilitation. This is the final interior view. And the wires that you see hanging are sensors for levels. Next slide. This is just the, it's really hard to see here, but right behind that shadow of a plant was where they cut out the door to get heavy equipment in. So it's all been rewelded in place and super-finished. And then finally, last slide. This is the overflow valve that, or the overflow pipe that was moved from interior to the tank, to the exterior. So that any rust, so if you think about it, if your straw is on the interior and you get a perforation in it, then it'll just start to overflow at the perforation and never make it to the top. And so the idea here was to move the pipe, the downspout outside, so that you would only overflow at the top, and then it would come down through this downspout and go through that baffle and out. So just wanted to give you a glimpse of where the money went. We are scheduled to begin being repaid in the budget that got approved by the Reclamation Management Committee last week. It did include the first repayment of a two-year repayment through the water rates to the district of about $500,000 this coming fiscal year. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, any more questions at this time, Jim? Okay, just one question. How much pure water Monterey been into the heck of one?
That's a great question. I don't have today's current data. I don't know if Marine you're on and could chime in. It's coming in via text as we speak. Just under 500 acre feet.
Oh, that's good, 500. And we gotta put 1,000 in, right?
Yeah, so we're about halfway there. And you know, we've had a couple of setbacks with the foundational support of the shallow wells and overall deliveries to the deeper wells, but gonna work it, you know, working it out.
All right, thank you, GM. Next, Attorney's Report.
There is no Attorney's Report this evening.
Thank you. Next is Director's Report, includes AB 1234, reports on trips, conferences, attendance, and meetings. Does anybody have anything?
I'll quickly really report that the Watermaster meetings have been canceled recently, so there's been no meetings. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Riley. Anyone else?
Okay. This is Chair Edwards. I want to just apologize to the public for our delay today. We got a new WebEx that we are using and putting in play. So to the public, we apologize, we're gonna work on that. To the staff, I want to thank you all for all the good work you've been doing over these last two months. I know it's been hard. I know trying to get us up to date, trying to use WebEx, and it's a matter, new program. But I want to thank the GM, General Counsel, the CFO, and all the staff, all the hard work they're doing. So I want you to continue on. We'll work the bugs out. Thank you. Public hearings. You have three public hearings and six action items. So let's start, General Manager. Arlene, what's the first one?
The first public hearing is consider second reading and adoption of ordinance number 185, amending District Rule 24 to allow special fixture unit accounting for second bathrooms in existing dwelling units and to permanently adopt submetering requirements and exemptions for accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Arlene, can you transfer the chair, the presenter, to me?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
All right.
So this item is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Chair, just a moment, please. Okay.
Slide showing a beginning.
Yeah.
We can see it, Stephanie, so F5.
Okay, well, then I, for whatever reason, it's not playing the actual show, so second reading. And actually, it's just not doing anything. It's just helping me one kind of bit. All right, I'm gonna stop sharing. Go back to the old-fashioned way of doing presentation. So this is the second reading. Last month, this ordinance had its first reading. What it does is permanently codify two Rule 23 amendments that were made by ordinance number 184 in August of 2019. Those amendments include the ADUs in existing structures can be exempt from the requirement for submetering and that permanent submetering is allowed for one newly constructed detached ADU on a property. The second bathroom addition is also amended, and the second bathroom addition was originally adopted in 2001 to allow a single-family residence with less than two bathrooms to add a second bathroom. And this ordinance actually expands that ability to add a second bathroom to any property that has less than four dwelling units on it, as long as the dwelling unit was actually constructed prior to May of 2001. So if you have a duplex or triplex, those would qualify to add a second bathroom for convenience. So we expanded it. It can include remodels and additions, and this was clarified in the ordinance between the first reading and the second reading. So Director Byrne had asked for a little bit of tweaking on the language, so that if somebody is enlarging an existing dwelling unit and they're putting the second bathroom in that enlargement, that would apply. So that language has been added and reviewed by Legal Counsel. You can't install a second bathroom in a new accessory dwelling unit. And part of this ordinance also was motivated because there were projects where people had taken advantage of the second bathroom ordinance and want to add an ADU using water from a jurisdiction's allocation. And so this change will allow that to occur at this time, so it's actually quite helpful. So the staff recommendation this evening, oh, sorry, back up one second. The SEQA review and initial study and a proposed negative declaration were filed with the county and circulated among interested parties from March 16 for a period of 20 days. No comments were received. The initial study and the notice of intent to adopt a negative declaration were provided in the board's staff report this evening. And the finding that we're looking at is that, quote, "Based upon completion of an initial study, MPWMD finds that there's no substantial evidence that the project may have a significant effect on the environment." So this evening, the recommendation is that staff is recommending the board adopt the finding supporting the negative declaration and then adopt ordinance number 185 on second reading. And if you adopt the ordinance this evening, we'll be following up with the county and filing the appropriate SEQA documents. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any more questions at this time? Any more questions? No more questions? Let's take it out to the public, Arlene, please.
Yes, I will. Just, just a moment. Okay. Okay, I'll see if we have any, anyone who wants to present public comments under this item. I see no raised hands.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is closed? More members?
We have, we have Motion to approve.
I have motion to approve on the vice chair.
Second. Second?
Second from Director Adams. On the second, anyone wanna speak? Go ahead, Director Riley.
No, I have nothing to say.
Anyone? All right, I just, this is Alvin. I just want to thank the staff for all the good, hard work they did on this. This was one of the, a good thing. It helped the community during these times. So I hope we be able to give this out to the community, all the cities, but thank you once again, staff. Call the question, roll call, please.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Yes.
And Director Edwards?
Yes.
Motion approved, seven zero. Thank you.
Motion passed, seven zero. Thank you. General Manager, next item.
Director Byrne voted yes on that.
Yes.
So did Director Adams.
Yeah, seven oh.
My apologies.
That's all right.
Okay, so this next item Jonathan Lear will present. It's about the quarterly water budget, and this is also the annual point in time where we assess our reserves, water in storage, and if necessary, make a declaration of impending drought or rationing. We will not be making any such declaration. John, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Board Members and Director Edwards. Arlene, if you could pass me the picture, I will bring up my presentation.
Okay, I've just, just made the change, John.
Thank you. So is that visible to people?
Yes.
Great. So as Dave said, this is actually my item number 12, and it's to receive and confirm water supply forecast for basically May 1st through the end of water year 2020 and through the entire water year of 2021 to assess if our water resources system has enough water, if we were to not receive significant recharge to make it through the rest of this water year and next water year. This forecast applies to current and projected water supplies, so we look at how much water we think we're gonna need for the rest of this water year, water year 2020, and then we look at our regulatory requirements. There will be a step down, a third, the final, triennial step down in the seaside adjudication decision, thus lowering the water available for native seaside water down to 1,474 for water year 2021. So that is a difference that is reflected in this analysis that we did for this determination year and week tonight. Our system includes the surface waters in the Carmel River and the Carmel Valley Lugano Aquifer, which is the Blue Strip in the bottom part of this map, and then the coastal and Laguna Seca subareas of the seaside groundwater basin, where the majority of the pumping occurs in this basin. This forecast also considers not only California-American water, but also all non-Californian water pumpers, so the city of Seaside and all the private pumpers in the valley as well as in the adjudicated basin. So these are all amalgamated when we do our, when we do our estimates for this writing. The forecast is based on all the usable storage in the system as of May 1st, 2020, and we turn that in our rules carryover storage. This water supply forecast is, is based on the actual water in the ground and doesn't account for any environmental considerations or any harm that happened if we were to pump this, and it doesn't take into account any of the rules being adjudication and the CDO. It's just simply to look at if we did not get any more water, significant water recharged next year, wouldn't we be able to make it through a need and a demand from the community? And if we had determined that we were afraid that we would not get this, so we would not have the ability to produce the water that the community would need, we would take a preemptive measure and start rationing at this point. So to look at where we are right now, our system capacity is at 90%, with the total system capacity being 33,130 currently as of May 1, we were 29,721 acre feet in storage. Now, when we look into demand, on the left-hand side of this chart, after the titles moving right, we see the May through September demands for California-American water, non-Calan, and then we bring them down and total them at the bottom. We move over to the next column, and this is the demand that's necessary to meet Calan water demand next year, so this is some of the adjudication boundary, adjudication, as well as the Carmel River, the CDO, and that gets us to 9,784. This does not, however, include any water projects or any other sources of water, as this rule is simply looking at the water and storage that we term carryover. as this rule is simply looking at the water and storage that we term carryover storage. We also bring in the demand that is going to be needed to meet the non-Calam pumpers, and we sum that to the bottom. We add both water years together and get the bold number down in the right, which is the total acre feet needed to get all Calam, non-Calam pumpers to the end of this water year and through next water year. And then when we compare it to the water that's in storage as of May first, which is twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty, we see that we have sufficient carryover storage to make it in the end of this year or next year. So to put into words what that table was saying, as of May first, we had twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty acre feet in storage. To avoid mandatory wash, uh, water rationing as required by our rules, we needed nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-six. So according to this analysis, as set forth in the, in your rule ten, um, we will not need to enter into mandatory rationing. So the recommendation to the board is to receive this long-term water supply forecast um, report for the Monterey Peninsula System for the end of this water and next year. Um, make the finding that given current carryover storage mandatory water rationing required as outlined in the district rules. And then if that determination is made, MPWMD shall continue in implementation of its water conservation provisions currently in place, which is the first stage of rationing and is what we are currently doing now. That concludes my presentation, and I can take, stop sharing. And I can take questions if there are any.
Director Byrne has a question.
Go ahead.
Exhibit ten E. These are the maximum storage capacities, not the legal um, usable amount.
Yes, that is, yes, thank you. That is um, it is, it is physically the um, the size of the storage vessels that we have in um, that supply water to the Monterey Peninsula. Um, those, the Carmel River Basin has more water in it in storage annually than is legally allowed to be produced because of the cease and desist order. So this is not taking that into account. This is, this is basically saying if you could legally take out eight thousand, three hundred acre feet this year, um, and you could go legally take out eight thousand, three hundred acre feet next year, but it was not, it didn't recharge any, is that, is that eight thousand, three hundred acre feet going to be there next year when you go to get it because you have legal rights to it? Is it physically going to be there? So that's what this determination is.
Right. And so they, the exhibit ten E, the required um, Calam water is the fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-four.
Fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-four for the um, for the adjudicated basin and the eight thousand, three hundred and ten for the um, uh, Carmel River.
So that's the required storage, but not necessarily the demand, or is it the demand?
That that is the legal amount that you would want to produce out of both of those systems in order to meet demand. Um, if additional waters are um, obtained through water projects per the CDO, they will write that down. So if no water was produced from any water projects in water year two thousand and twenty-one, you would have that legal source of water available to meet the peninsula's demand. Whether or not that is the peninsula's actual demand, those are the actual legal limits without producing any water from any new water project. Um, and so this is to determine if that storage is there, if that were to be the case.
Great, thank you.
Any other board questions?
I have a question, Riley.
Go ahead.
When is the next report on this subject normally due?
This, there are two different reports. So this report is, is, as we have said, um, to determine if the water is in, in, if we were to have a bad recharge here, i.e. we enter a drought or multiple years of drought, we check on this on May one every year. So this is an annual report. However, we do the quarterly water budgets, and there it's a three, there's a three-pronged approach that are centered around all these themes of reports. This one is the one that's done annually to see if the water is physically in the system over the next half a water year and future water year. The rule one sixty is done annually, which is the determination of the legal right uh, and and limit, legal limits to produce legally out of the system. And then the third reports are the quarterly reports that come around that go on a deeper dive into it and figure out what's the best way to produce water out of the system in the most environmentally responsible way and in order to meet all of this different state board orders and the rules associated with those on how you're allowed to use the resource system.
And even on a monthly basis, the current usable storage is reported as it compares to the previous twelve months rolling uh, total of uh, usage or production. So you can, that's kind of like a twelve-month check compared to the most recent twelve-month period.
Uh, the, the reason I was focusing on this particular report was it had projected out till September, two thousand and twenty-one. And I think we need to keep looking down the road at that kind of target date because there's a ramp down due in two thousand and twenty-one. It may or may not have a bearing on everything we're doing. That's all. Thank you.
Director Byrne has another question.
Go ahead, Director.
So back on exhibit ten E, on the total storage required, the fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-four is a legal amount of water. That's not just based on storage. That's based on what we can legally use.
Correct. That is a, um, that is Calam's portion of the native water um, that is legally theirs to pump and over the authority from Monterey County Superior Court through the um, adjudication decision.
Hi, Sharon. Did you get your answer?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other director? Okay, this is the public hearing. Let's open up to the public, Arlene. Three minutes.
Anyone who would like to comment, please use the raise your hand icon or press star nine on your phone. Chair Edwards, I see no raised hands.
Thank you, Arlene. Back to the board. Any other questions, motions? Anyone would like to make a motion?
This is Director Evans. I will move approval of the staff recommendation.
Okay, Director Evans, made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Riley.
Second, Riley. Motion made by Director Evans, second by Director Riley. Anyone want to comment on a second? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Yes.
And Director Edwards?
Yes.
Through seven zero.
Motion passed, seven zero. Next item, Arlene?
This is item eleven, consider adoption of urgency ordinance number one eighty-six, temporarily suspending a portion of rule twenty-four B one I pertaining to exterior restaurant seating in response to COVID nineteen reopening procedures.
Thank you, Arlene. GM, who's want to give?
Yep, this is, um, we're going to let Stephanie Locke read you in on this. Um, this did not exist when we last met. This came up over the weekend, and she worked uh, quickly to address a specific need. Stephanie with that.
Yeah, Arlene, can you please give me a presenter?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Let's try this again this time. Hopefully I got this one. Yeah, of course not. I don't know what's going on with my PowerPoint. It's not working the way it's supposed to be working right now. Um, all right, well, since I don't have that. There we go. All right, that'll work sort of. Um, so essentially, this item has to do with what happens when reopening occurs and particularly with the restaurants who have been um, stuck having to do only take out at this point during the shutdown. Um, the governor put out guidelines last Tuesday that prioritize moving out business outdoors to the extent possible to be able to continue social distancing. And of course, we're not open at this time for restaurants to have sit-in dining or even have outdoor dining. However, it may occur before board has another meeting. Um, you know, it may happen before we would be able to take action. And so I had some conversations with the local business, business people who expressed kind of a concern and a need to have the district address outdoor seating before it became an issue. Um, and so what we have done is looked at our rule twenty-four, which regulates outdoor restaurant seating. And our rules actually limit outdoor seating to one half of the number of indoor seats. And if you go beyond that number, so in other words, if you have a restaurant that has eight seats, you can put four seats outside without requiring a water permit. But if you go to five outdoor seats, it triggers a requirement for water permit. To try to avoid that red tape, um, we looked at our rules and, uh, which is the ordinance that you're looking at this evening, and I'll go into that in just a little bit more detail. But uh, what really triggered this too is that the jurisdictions have started looking at ways that they can facilitate outdoor dining when reopening occurs. And we've had, uh, some of our jurisdictions looking, actually at this point, looking at um, public space as an option, um, areas in the um, Bay Area are looking at things like driveways, parking lots, alleyways, those kinds of things. So, um, we know right now that indoor space restrictions will limit the ability to social distance and that outdoor seating is really going to be um, very important to the restaurants to be able to try to uh, maintain during the reopening. So the ordinance number one eighty-six is an urgency ordinance. Um, again, what this just, it just applies only to outdoor seating. It allows a restaurant to take seats from inside and move them outside so that if they have a place that they can do outdoor seating, that they can take their indoor seats and move them out without a requirement for permit. Um, the only thing that they will need to do with the water district is to confirm that we have a seat count for their indoor seats so that when this is all over and done with, um, we know how many seats they're supposed to have inside. Um, and I do have to say that we have most of that information already in our files back in uh, two thousand and fifteen when we adopted the outdoor seating regulations, we um, required every restaurant that had more seating outdoors than that half of the indoor number um, to contact the district, ensure that information. And not only that, but we also have contacts with the jurisdictions and use permits and also list the number of seating. Um, all action would be subject to approval by the jurisdiction, so the water district's action doesn't automatically make it okay for somebody to move their seats outdoors. They still have to have approval from their jurisdiction, but what it will do is help them to understand what the parameters are going to be when they're able to reopen. Um, the recommendation this evening is that the board adopt ordinance one eighty-six with urgency to address an immediate need for outdoor seating when reopening is allowed. Um, because it is an urgency ordinance, um, actually, and I think Dave Paredo, it has to have five out of the seven votes to pass.
That's correct, correct.
And it also is a temporary ordinance, so it would expire after one year. And of course, we can adopt additional uh, rules throughout the time, you know, as we know what's going on. And and then if adopted this evening, um, I will make sure that the restaurants and the jurisdictions and the district understand what exactly that means to them. Um, I know we've gotten a great deal of support. Um, I think we've gotten a number of letters and emails today um, in support of this ordinance. And anyway, that's my recommendation.
Just need to clarify that this does not automatically allow this to happen. It still has to come top-down, governor through uh, county health official Ed Moreno. Um, it's just there to facilitate the orders of these other parties.
Thank you, Stephanie and GM. More questions?
I have a question. This is Director Evans.
Go ahead, Director Evans.
Thank you. Um, Stephanie, thank you. Thank you for bringing this up. Thank you for being proactive and looking to the future to make things easier on us. Um, we're already in a tough time. Question for you is, um, on this, when you said, uh, you talked about moving their indoor seats outside, do, does this, uh, suspending the ordinance, would that allow them to have one hundred percent of the number of inside seats outside, or does it still impose a limit on the number of seats outside without a permit?
Um, it would allow them to, so right now, and and interesting, same, obviously in the ordinance, um, indoor, indoor restaurant seats have a factor of point zero two acre foot per seat. Outdoor restaurant seats have a factor that's half of that. So in fact, what you would be able to do is if you remove one indoor seat, you would be able to put two seats outdoors. And it would not, as long as you can exchange, do the exchange between indoor and outdoor, then you could move those seats outdoors. So that, that's the limitation. If
You, you mean under current rules, Stephanie, but under this rule, under this interim emergency ordinance, does that math hold, or is it whatever you've got inside, you can move outside?
Well, that, exactly. Yeah, whatever you have inside, you can move outside and double.
So what you're saying, it, sorry, if I may, in your example before where you had eight restaurant seats, and you said that they would not need a permit if they added four outside, so now they have a total of twelve without a water permit. Now, under this, if this emergency ordinance is inactive, they would be able to have twenty, uh, sorry, sixteen outdoor seats because they are moving one of their eight, each one of their eight go outside, and then that becomes two, potentially.
Well, so right now, if they had, okay, so a restaurant with eight seats has four seats outside right now, which is in compliance with our requirements. Okay, so if they move all eight seats from inside to outside, yes, that would mean that they would put sixteen additional seats plus the four that
So plus the four that they have. So theoretically, if there's enough space and all of that to do this.
Most places don't have that.
Correct, correct. But I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to, to understand what it is that, that we are allowing them to do.
Yeah, and, and the reasoning behind that is, and that's a finding that actually is in, I believe it's in the ordinance, so it's in our rules, um, because of weather constraints and other constraints, outdoor seating just doesn't have the same capacity as indoor seating. And so we found that it was about half of the indoor seat demand.
Okay, so, so just, just to confirm, so the restaurants will be able to keep the number of existing outdoor seats they had before and potentially add two times the number of indoor seats that they had?
If they shifted everything outside.
If they shifted everything outside and there was space and all other rules and requirements and things are met, that, okay, that's all. Thank you. That's my question.
Director Potter has a comment. He can't seem to unmute from his location.
Well, it's not there. I think we're under questions right now.
Yes.
I'll save my comment for the comment period.
All right, sir. Thank you.
I have, I have a question. Director Byrne? Um, on the findings, on number six, it says the governor's guideline Um, on the findings, on number six, it says the governor's guidelines include removing tables and chairs from indoor dining. So that six feet of physical distance can be maintained. Does this mean they can still have some indoor dining as well as the outdoor dining?
Absolutely, yeah. And, and many cases, they're not going to be able to unmute seating outside. So yeah, they can definitely maintain their indoor seating.
Now, is this something that we put in place or do we have to wait until county health guy?
This is an action that our district can make right now. And what it will do is give guidance to our local restaurants as to how the water district will respond to the reopening.
Right, but it doesn't mean they can reopen.
No, they still have to wait for the county to reopen. And even then, each jurisdiction may have its own requirements.
How do we put pressure on the county health administrator to move forward?
So perhaps I could respond to that question.
Go ahead.
Uh, and I have a question of my own as well. Um, the, the county will be able to move forward as soon as we meet the governor's readiness criteria. And there's a whole list of things that we have to do to be able to get to that point. Only when we get to that point will restaurants be able to move everything outside and start to, um, serve people, uh, as they, as they choose. And this action today, which I'm very supportive of, would allow them already to have one jump up because they'll already have their water ability to, to move. It's just as anybody would in any kind of a project that you're working on. To be able to do as much ahead as you possibly can is exactly what this, um, what this is doing. But I do have a question, Stephanie. Thank you very much for jumping on this. When I first heard it, I thought, whoa, people jumping over the governor's readiness criteria? And I was very relieved when I got a little more information. So thank you for that. Um, but I just am wondering, do you know how much outdoor seating has been permitted in the unincorporated area? Um, or if there are any land use issues that are going to, you know, impact our capability to do outdoor dining in, in jurisdictions under, um, locations under the county's regulations?
Actually, that's a really good question. And that's why I said we have to defer to the county or to the jurisdictions. Um, I know this is just starting, I mean, we've just started discussions. And not only here on the peninsula, but the Bay Area as well. Um, and each jurisdiction is going to have to grapple with whether or not they want to give up public space, if that's what it takes. You know, how you continue to be able to have people able to use the sidewalks and whatnot. So it really is each jurisdiction. And, um, I, I don't know how the county situation will be.
And, and we don't have a perfect count. We've on numerous occasions attempted to go out and get that perfect count. And in some cities, we're better than in others. But in the unincorporated area, um, you know, what is an, what is an outdoor seat that is dedicated to a specific restaurant is different than what is an outdoor seat that's common area seat? Um, we've seen that more often like with Del Monte Center, but, um, you get up in Mid Valley and Carmel Valley Village. There are some areas that have some common, uh, use to them. You know, one example would be the, the wine bar with the Tessa Rosa Wine Room with, uh, you know, whole area there where it's sometimes hard to figure out where people are seated related to which tasting room or the, the bar. Um, but we do have quite a number of counts of, of what's out there. And if you'd like to know more, we can go into the files.
That's, that's fine.
And again, it does apply only to the full service restaurants. It's not.
That's correct.
Delicatious.
And Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I could add a, a comment, please. I'd like to point out that this is an urgency ordinance only. This will not affect a permanent change. This is only going to last if it's adopted for one year. And therefore, under this ordinance, you'll have some experience when this comes back to consider if you want to continue it or let it sunset, you'll have a much better understanding as to what that does. But, but as terms of a long-term, uh, effect, uh, that would be in the successor ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Laredo. Any other board members? Okay, Ireland, public comment.
Yes.
Three minutes. Thank you.
All right, there are several public comments. I'm going to pull up the clock. And then we will start the public comment. All right. Mr. Curcio, please make your comment.
Yes, my name is Gary Curcio. I'm the Chair of Government Affairs, the Monterey County Hospitality Association. First of all, I applaud the staff for bringing this forward. Uh, we need to get our hospitality professionals back to work. Uh, this is a great step forward. And, uh, we certainly would, uh, follow all social distancing and all regulations required. Uh, I firmly support this and ask that the board support the staff recommendation for number 187. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curcio. Mr. Dayton, please identify yourself and make your comment. Mr.
Am I?
Mr. Dayton, yes, please make your comment.
Kevin Dayton, representing Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. We are supportive of this. I know that, uh, uh, this is in the works in Carmel. Monterey and Seaside. And, uh, we have been checking with, uh, various merchants, uh, in, uh, in our membership to see if they're supportive of this. Uh, currently, we've found a lot of support from restaurants. And, uh, we're also hoping that retail, uh, will take the opportunity too to take this. And, uh, it's good to see that we're overcoming the obstacle here of water with this, uh, emergency or urgency ordinance. So thank you for considering this and please vote for it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. And remember to please, um, uh, use your raised hand icon, uh, when you're done with your comment to please put it down. Uh, Mr. Hafa, please make your comment. Mr. Hafa.
Hi, uh, thank you all for your service and thank you to the staff for bringing this forward. Um, it's a council member for the city of Monterey. I've heard from a number of businesses about the impact of COVID-19, and I'm sure you're one of them. Uh, my concern as a council member is, is twofold. I'm concerned for those businesses and the people who work there. And I'm also concerned for the city's ability to provide services. Over the first few months of this crisis, we've been losing approximately $3 million a month in general fund revenues alone. That's not even counting other revenue sources that are being heard. Uh, it's about a 40% loss to our general fund. We had to recently off 88 employees, which was a very tough decision. That, that was about 100% of our city's staff. So I would urge you to do what you can, uh, to work with our local businesses and jurisdictions to try to get, um, businesses back on the feet, back on their feet. Where we all need to work together and I appreciate, uh, your time. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
All right, I have, uh, someone who's calling in. I'm going to unmute you. You should, uh, hear a prompt. Hello, I'm calling.
Hey, I think, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Oh, okay, Margaret Ed Copperdall. I just wanted to thank you too, along with the other folks who are thanking you for this wonderful idea to follow through, to try to do something to support our businesses, hospitality, our workers especially. This is also going to have a big impact on our agriculture, farmers, rappers, et cetera. So thank you for considering it. And if you could do anything to help and still stay within the guidelines of the health, the health department, that would be super wonderful. And thank you too for being such a wonderful, dedicated staff.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, all right. Uh, Ms. Jennings, uh, please make your comment.
Yes, uh, uh, thank you very much for your service. And thank you for bringing this emergency ordinance up. I, I think it's a wonderful thing that we're doing. We need to get the restaurants back in order and working properly. I'm hearing background. I don't know what's going on, but anyway. Um, and I want to apologize if I seemed short before about the, uh, the video. I understand you guys are working really hard about everything. And I, I know that you are and I appreciate all the work that you and your staff and everybody's doing. But yes, I think that this emergency adoption order should be passed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, um, Ms. Sonny. Please present your comment.
Wonderful. I see I'm on mute. My name's Lizanne Sonny. And I'm just very much in support of this and encourage the board to support this as well. Our businesses need all the help they can get right now. And with social distancing measures, they certainly won't be able to have the amount of people that they need in their restaurants. Obviously, in winter and this fall, when it gets colder, there'll be other concerns. But right now, we need to be day to day. And I just want to thank the water district for thinking proactively, both the staff and the board. They're really considering this major, supportive of this entirely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have a caller, someone who's called in. Please identify yourself.
Hi, this is Esther Malkin with Monterey Municipal Renters United.
Yes, please make your comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, I want to echo the previous comments, um, saying that this is a really good, um, step in the right direction. I want to also, um, throw in the, the fact that it would help the number of workers that could be employed by this, um, detail that was just brought up about doubling the amount of seats um, that are brought outdoors, which would be a really significant, um, help to the businesses as far as being able to bring on, bring back more workers so that they can, um, start recovering from this crisis, uh, as well as the businesses themselves. So thank you, um, for the explanation and detail about how that would work. Because I think everybody was probably going to assume that it was going to be a one for one trade on indoor to outdoor seat. And by, um, hearing that it's, it's actually going to double it is very encouraging. So thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Davy, please present your comment.
Okay, thank you. This is Dr. Abby Leffler, resident of the peninsula. Uh, I want to applaud the staff and the board. If you take this action, it's very, very good, very helpful. Uh, and I want to just thank you for doing it at this important time. And I just want to thank you for, uh, uh, putting this together and, uh, bringing it so quickly. I, I hope we can do everything we can to get these businesses back to work. We're coming off of a real tough time for the whole community, the whole country, the whole world. But we need to get back to work. So I applaud you for this action. Also, I meant to thank you for number nine earlier as well. Great job with the bathroom credits and so on and so forth. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Ms., Ms. Chirbagian, please make your comment.
Yes, hi, good evening. Thank you so much. I just, I, I'm sure you're all aware, as are, we are in contact with the National Restaurant Association on a regular basis that about 30, 40 days ago, they estimated that 30% of the restaurants in the country would not be able to reopen as this goes by. They are up to 40% now. I cannot thank you enough for being so proactive. Because as, as we shorten the days that they can, before they can go back to work, we are thankful and we love our restaurants. We love our employees here. And it is critically important that we shorten the time so they can go back to work. And again, I, I repeat what everybody else said. I applaud you and thank you so much for allowing this to happen proactively.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Bruno, please make your comment.
I want to thank you again, like everyone else, for what you're doing here. I also want to point out that water supply and water policy is always important to businesses. It's always important to our economy. It's not just during the pandemic and, and crisis like this, but at all times. So anytime you can do something that will help our economy through your water policy is much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno.
I have a caller. Um, you may have, um, two phones. You may be using two phones or you may have your computer speakers and your phone working. I'm going to unmute you again. We need to have just one device. There we go. There we go. Here 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 we go. Okay, I'm sorry, we cannot hear your comment. So if you would like to, uh, turn off the speakers on your computer, that may help. All right, I think that, uh, that person. Hello, caller? All right, there are no other, um, public comments. Um, Chair Edwards.
Thank you. We're closed public comment. Uh, one question to Stephanie, for me, how do we get this out to the community? City of Seaside, Monterey, how do we get this, this new ordinance out there?
Well, I have to say first, I've already sent the ordinance to all the city managers. Um, but I'll follow up with them and I'll follow up with every person that I can possibly get ahold of that knows how to put the word, so.
Okay, and I want to thank you in advance. This is well done.
Thank you.
Board members?
Yes, this is Director Evans. I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve this urgency ordinance.
I'll send it, but I'd like to make comments too. Okay, so yeah, just wanted to make a couple of comments, Chair, if you don't mind, and I'll second the ordinance. I just really thank everyone so much for the work that they put into this. I co-chair the hospitality, uh, ad hoc committee for the Board of Supervisors. And this is just the primary thing on my mind every single day. All of the workers who have been displaced, all of the businesses that are just struggling to, to try to survive. And I really applaud the, um, the staff here, as well as all of the people from the restaurant industry who have been phoning me, not just urging me to support this, but letting me know how faithful they will be in abiding by the rules, the readiness criteria, not to open before we get the absolute go-ahead from the, uh, from the governor's office and our county as well. And I just really want to thank everybody for pulling together on this. This, the only way we're going to be able to survive is a community that depends so much on hospitality. So this is certainly one important step forward. And I'm just very, very thankful that, um, that it's come forward and I, I really urge our support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Potter, I know you had comments.
Feed everything everybody's already said. I'm, I'm very supportive of this. And I do believe that, uh, it's a real pleasure to be with this, say, district tonight when we have something that there was not one single person in opposition to this. I really appreciate that. It shows that we are being what everybody said proactive instead of reactive, and that's a good thing. So glad to hear that we're moving forward.
Thank you, Director Potter. Any other board members? Okay, on the question, roll call, both please.
Okay, on the question, roll call vote please.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Adams? Director Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, approve seven zero, thank you.
Prove seven zero, thank you. That's it for the public hearing, now we're in the front row. Action item, DM, Arlene first, what did?
We are on action item twelve, consider recommendation to the board to adopt final report, supply and demand for water on the Monterey Peninsula.
Yes, this is the part of our show where people don't all say nice things about us anymore. So, we're moving on, but thank you for that last vote. Nothing has changed in this report since it was brought back to the Water Demand Committee in March. But there were changes from its original, uh, format in September two thousand nineteen. Those changes being, uh, in December, a, an effort was made to not rely on historical growth rates, but instead to look at a third-party, uh, forecast for the area, which was Ambag's, uh, two thousand eighteen growth forecast. And then subsequent to that release, uh, there was, uh, a third party that reviewed it and raised a bunch of issues called Hazen and Sawyer. And there were also some questions raised by city managers as well as members of the public and a variety of different, interest groups. So additional effort was done to consolidate a lot of information into the single final report. It is brought before you with a staff recommendation for adoption. As the district's report, it is not something we will do every year, but we will do periodically, uh, over a period of time. And, um, it will not be changed any further based on any additional comments or suggestions, uh, at this point in time. And with that, we bring it to you for discussion and, um, potential adoption.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm touching stuff I shouldn't be touching. Question from the board. Any board question? No board question?
I have, I have a question, I have a question, Chair. Uh, thank you, uh, I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification on the staff notes. Um, in, in the first line of the staff note summary, it stated that added September sixteenth, twenty nineteen, meeting the district board accepted a report entitled Supply and Demand Order on Monterey Peninsula, blah, blah, blah. Arlene, can you mute other attend, the attendees, please? It appears that some of the, um, attendees are not. And it's, it's given me some feedback. Uh, thank you. Um, on the, so it says that we, that the district board accepted a report. So on the next page, it details that accept is the same as approved.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. We should have just said that it is received.
Okay, that's what I wanted to confirm, because I went back through my I went back through.
Arlene, would you mute Director Potter?
Please mute yourself. Ms. Jennings, could you please mute yourself?
And, Arlene, same thing for Director Potter, he's having trouble with the controls at his end.
I'm not making that noise, though.
Uh, I went back through my notes from that meeting and, um, I did not have any, uh, action by the board on that. So I just wanted to clarify the state, the statement that we had accepted the reports. If we already did, then why are we discussing it again tonight?
Yeah, no, that's a great point, it would be received and you see the nuance on received that I just learned as well in this process, which is, once you get it, you've received it, you don't have to, motion to receive. Who knew?
Uh, that's, that's my question, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is the action item. We open up to the public for three-minute comments. Is somebody speaking?
Arlene, we cannot hear anything.
Arlene, it appears that you are muted.
I, this is Rick Hoyer, I'm not sure if I'm muted or not.
Um, we'll go back to the other speaker, Mr. Hoyer, could you please make your comment?
Okay, if you could start the clock at three minutes again, I'd appreciate it.
I would be happy to, thank you.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, my name is Rick Hoyer, I'm president of Monterey Peninsula Tax Payers Association. Uh, I've got a, a number of different issues with this report. Most importantly, it, it's kind of rare when you have the city managers of all cities chiming in together and disagreeing with the amount of water being forecasted and long-term needs being said and shown in this memo for what development is needed. That doesn't happen very often and yet, at your request, you reached out to them and they gave you the feedback, they've basically been ignored in this report. Also, the, the entity that determines, has determined the water need and through extensive public hearings with sworn testimony, others, it's the CPUC. And their numbers are not your numbers, their numbers are what are governing the water projects and all the rest. They went through extensive public hearings, they heard public testimony under perjury, interviewed hundreds of pages of legal briefs and are much more extensive. And now yet you're coming out of the blue with a whole new demand study, which unfortunately was linked to the report, sent to public entities before and is now making its way into decisions of Coastal Commission and elsewhere, yet it's never been adopted by your board in the first place. The entire process behind this has been extremely political and really doesn't meet the needs of the long-term development needs for this area, particularly as we try to rebuild business and have more growth of business so that we can get more money put into affordable housing. All you're doing is basically ignoring the cities and their needs and not meeting the, the demands of residents for the long term. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'm going back. Um, to the person who's called in, please identify yourself and present your comment. All right, we, we're moving on to, um, Mr. Dayton, please identify yourself and present your comment.
Yes, Kevin Dayton, representing Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. I've made some comments about this report before, noting that perhaps, uh, the range of future, uh, demand in particular may not be accurate. I have to say this is a, um, maybe this has no legal authority, but it's certainly a, a good weapon, uh, for, uh, people to use, uh, to, uh, fight anything that's proposed to be built in this area. It's, it's definitely a setback for people who would like to see diversification of the economy in this area. Would like to see more housing built. And, uh, many would say, you know, this is just another symbol that the Monterey Peninsula, uh, is not interested in economic, uh, development here. They like the current trend of the population decline and it's going to continue this way. I, I regret, uh, that this report, uh, is going to be brought out to the public and probably be used, uh, uh, to, uh, uh, fight new proposals for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Arlene, I see that, I see that Tony Lombardo is looking to be unmuted. He's not sure if his hand is up or not.
Um, I'm going, I don't, let's see. Um, his, his hand is up and I will get to him, uh, if he doesn't mind waiting. I see that his hand is up. Uh, the next person I have in line is Fred Muir. Mr. Muir, please, uh, identify yourself and present your comment. Mr. Muir?
Yes, you there?
Arlene?
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Start the clock over for him, please.
Pardon me?
Start the clock over for him, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Muir.
Mr. Muir?
Fred Muir, speaking on behalf of the Monterey Bay Defense Alliance. We recommend that you reject the draft supply-demand analysis and stay with the analysis approved by the CPUC process, which you actually helped develop. But the letter to you from the five peninsula city managers outlines the report's technical flaws and the negative impacts on the cities if you were to adopt the water, to adopt the report and downsize the proposed water supply system. The State Water Resources Board has also questioned validity of the supply-demand report in their recent letter to the Coastal Commission. The financial impact of COVID nineteen on the Peninsula economy, particularly the hospitality and retail sector, highlights the Defense Department's local economic contribution. It must be protected. The Defense Department's installations, schools, labs, and operational units, continued presence, potential growth on the Monterey Peninsula are dependent upon the region being able to provide adequate water and other critical infrastructure. Your staff distributed this supply-demand analysis prior to it being vetted or approved and the Coastal Commission staff cited it in their finding that our demand is less than that approval by the CPUC. They therefore questioned the need for the D cell plant, thinking that a pure wa, pure water expansion would provide sufficient supply to meet this understated demand. But the pure water expansion environmental document failed to be certified by the Monterey One Water Board, so the project went on with a full The pure water expansion also is operationally questionable because of the source water availability and potential litigation Selena's Valley interests that must meet groundwater sustainability to be accurate. The operational problems, increased costs and completion date delays in the first phase of the pure water system actually call into question how much it can be relied upon to contribute thirty-five hundred acres of water it is supposed to supply to the current water portfolio. Please focus on completing Monterey Water Supply Project with D cell, Pure Water Phase One and ASR, as originally developed to provide a resilient and efficient water supply that avoids water poverty the Peninsula has endured the last forty-plus years and allows the cities and counties the agility and independence to execute their general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Peter Mountier, please present your comment.
Hi there, Peter Mountier with the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce. The city managers have disagreed with the amount of water forecasted to meet our long-term demands, uh, in this memo. We believe that their unanimity on the inadequacy of that document should concern this board deeply, particularly as it relates to our municipality's ability to legislate around affordable housing. Uh, additionally, this document has already seriously slanted the Coastal Commission's discourse on the water supply environment on the Peninsula. Despite the fact that it is not peer-reviewed, the memo's damage has been done. Adoption of this report will only give the memo more weight than it probably should have had and voting it down would send the right message to policymakers at the state level that the patchwork approach is the wrong approach to solving our water supply issues. If only the future water supplies contemplated in this memo are provided, then there's no D cell and it's clear that the water needed to meet the CDO would not be delivered and the moratorium on new connections would be unable to be lifted. The Peninsula would continue to live in water poverty with no ability to grow and our economy, especially now, would have no chance to recover. Please vote it down, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Susan Chivani, please present your comment.
Hello, um, good evening, uh, please adopt the final supply and demand report. Legally, it is the district's purview to analyze supply and demand. Peer reviews and analysis of this data have now been done and we have two studies, not one. Not only is Cal AM now using the lower numbers in their rate requests, but both of these studies verify Dave Stoll's report and the conclusion of the Coastal Commission staff. Thank you again to Dave and staff for the hard work doing this report. Since September of two thousand eighteen, when the CPUC refused to hear about alternatives and accepted the overestimated water demand, this has been one of the ongoing myths perpetrated by Cal AM's supporters to justify its vehement D cell plan. I appreciate very much the board's moving to research this and reveal the truth. Now it's time to finalize the process and adopt this report and I apologize for my clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bruno, please present your, present your comment.
Okay, well, thank you for muting me and I wish you could open up my camera, you'd see that my hair is channeling Kenny Rogers right now. Let's see. Well, there's a lot of controversy over this report, you know, we all know that. And that, that alone should cause the district to pause and, and take notice. And I, I think about how we calculate our future water, water needs and I, you know, I think that it takes the, you know, work of a, a broad array of experts and when I think of experts in the community about who knows what their water needs are, I would look to the city managers. Unfortunately, the city managers are not on board. They don't agree with this forecast, they don't agree what's included in the report. And why is that important? Because aiming low has risk. If we aim low, we, we possibly condemn ourselves to a life of water poverty and that's not really something I want to leave for my children. I, I've been fighting this battle for too many years to allow that to be our future. There's also an environmental risk if we aim low. Uh, in particular, Seaside Basin is put at risk. You know, the Seaside Basin has been our go-to source for water, for the other water supply source. When, when, when the others come up short, we seem to turn to the Seaside Basin and we damage it. So, you know, we really can't continue to rely upon that source for our mistakes. And for those reasons, I, I wish you, I urge you to not adopt this analysis as it's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno.
Melody Krasla, please present your comment.
Oh, where's unmute, let's.
I unmuted you, Ms. Krasla.
All right, still unmuted?
Yes.
Would you start that over, thanks? Would you start the clock over?
I just started, please present your comment.
Melody Krasla, Public Water Now. I just want to say thank you so much to Molly, Director Evans, for having the idea to authorize this report and to Dave Stoll for the endless work and, ridicule that he's had to put up with in doing such a public service to this community. I mean, Dave, you really are the hero of this community at this point and so many people know it. I mean, you have a few detractors, but the majority of people are so grateful that you and Molly stepped forward and did what needed to be done here. Because the CPUC's numbers were so wrong and so outdated, we would have been stuck with this ridiculous estimate. So, um, I wanted to address a couple of the, the, uh, the current, the current propaganda machine here seems to be the lie repeated a thousand times. Only this time we have about six lies that are being repeated over and over again. The level of demand in this report does not limit growth. The expansion of pure water Monterey is enough for growth, that is the whole point of the report. I don't know why people can't read it and understand it. The expansion will lift the CDO. The State Water Resources Control Board has said they don't care where this water comes from. Just get it done. The source water for the expansion is secure, it is drought-proof. The pure water Monterey does not take water from egg, no matter what the Salinas Valley keeps saying. There, there's no water being taken from them for the pure water Monterey project. The recent failure of the SEIR vote is pure politics, there was no, nothing. There was no, nothing wrong with the project. No environmental defect. So, you know, we have here just Cal-Am bribing the Ag members of that board. To be blunt, the Pure Water Monterey project does not have big problems. It just needs another well. Well, Cal-Am's wells have often gone way over budget. Maybe $4 million once started out. I think it went up to $21 million. Anyway, I hope you will not only adopt this report, but I hope you will take it further and really take it out to the state agencies where Cal-Am has spent endless money and time lobbying them to discredit this report so that they can have their more profitable D cell. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a caller online. I just, just.
Did I just say do it?
Yes, please.
Hello?
Yes, please present your comment.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, this wonderful board. I just wanted to say that, in my opinion, from my perspective, of course, that David Stolt did a brilliant job in all aspects of his supply and demand report with much humility and professionalism. David Stolt went back to the drawing board to double-check all analyses and data without, I must add, any complaining about certain very public unfair, disingenuous criticism. We all are very fortunate to have such a dedicated leader as Dave Stolt for general manager. His is a heart that deeply cares about doing what is in the best interest of our communities. This is the essence of genuinely good and wise leadership. Please do not hesitate to applaud and adopt the supply and demand report. It is solid. It is sound. It has much merit as it was accomplished with outstanding excellence. Staff is also wonderful, effective, and committed, as is your board. So I thank you so, so much for all your wonderful efforts and energy on our behalf.
Please, I think, could you please identify yourself for the record?
Ms. Kopernick?
Yeah, thank you. I, I just wanted to hear her say.
Yeah, I believe it was Margaret Ann Kopernick.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Lombardo, Tony Lombardo, please present your comment. Tony Lombardo, please present your comment. Yes, we can.
Arlene, thank you.
I am. I started it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be brief. First of all, I think the real hero tonight is Arlene for having paid all of this work so far. I recommend that you do not adopt the report as the district's position regarding future water demand for several, perhaps more legalistic reasons. The first is that it is inconsistent with the position that you, as the district, took during the Public Utilities Commission proceedings. It's also inconsistent with the Public Utilities, Public Utilities Commission final decision to which you were a party. It's also inconsistent with the judgment entered by the California Supreme Court to which the district was a party. It's, as you've heard earlier, it's inconsistent with the demand determinations made by all of the cities and by the military community. It's also inconsistent with, and I'm sorry to contradict Ms. Kraslock, but she's absolutely incorrect, that this is inconsistent with the State Water Board's determination of what the necessary supply to lift the cease and desist order is going to take, and it doesn't account for climatic changes or, as Mr. Bruno said, recharging of the seaside aquifer. So in closing, I'd just like to say, adopting this report as a position of the district means that you're not only ignoring the judgment of the inaction before the Supreme Court and the PUC to which you were parties to both, but also, I'm afraid, it's going to damage the credibility of our community and the district with the State Water Resources Control Board, which will be a detriment to our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sosay Folsom, please present your comment. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Oh, thank you. That's a wonderful attempt. I appreciate that. I'm actually here commenting again on this report. It is absolutely necessary that we adopt this report immediately. I am listening to these disingenuous speakers who sound like they're reading off of a Cal-Am prepared comment card. I find it especially offensive that one of the callers said that they are concerned about the future for their children. I have a six-year-old daughter. I know many children in this community, many families who are struggling with inordinately high water bills. I have no doubt, having read the report, actually, that this is an accurate view of our current consumption and projected consumption. And, you know, it's incredibly important here that we this in view for the community. We have a D cell plant that, you know, Cal-Am is trying to sell to the CPUC. And again, they're using these same old talking points. You know, oh, we've got to create more affordable housing. You know, we need to expand. Anytime those concessions, and in the past, and I've, you know, being someone who has lived here almost my entire life in the Carmel Valley Village, anytime we hear these kind of arguments and concessions are given for more and more development, it's always the same. They never deliver on any affordable housing. This is no longer a question of whether or not our future demand can be sustained with this projected report. This is what Cal-Am is trying to say is that, you know, we should go ahead and certify the D cell plant. That's really what this is about. That's the argument they're trying to make. And so in sum, please do certify this report. It's crucial. We need to preserve affordable water for our community. And I thank the board for their thorough and scientific review of the data and our water needs for the future.
Thank you, ma'am.
Comment from Jeff Dabby. Dabby, please present your comment.
Hello, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Jeff Dabby, a lifelong resident of the peninsula. Also speaking as co-chair of the Coalition of Peninsula Businesses to this item. We have expressed our concern about this document since its beginning in the fall. I think we've written two letters to the district about it. Our position remains the same today. We do not support these numbers. We do not support your adoption of the document. And we really believe this is basically a continuation of how this community's lived the last three years in effective water poverty. And think about that for a while. How many speakers have brought the word water poverty? The district's goal is to find a solution to our water problems. Now, along with that come a lot of important things that must be done. And I just don't know that predicting our water supply or demand is critically important. Get the water for this community so we have it for the future. Let the jurisdictions figure out how much we're going to use of it. Wouldn't it be nice to have more water than we need so that we never have to have children in rationing? And I was a child of rationing, cheering a bathtub number four out of five kids. And imagine how that felt. Not a fun time. We don't want our kids to go through that. Now, I was one of the people that encouraged the district to ask the cities for their input, and I want to thank you for doing that. I think it was very important to do that. I do wish you had maybe decided to do what the city's recommending, and that is spend some more time on the analysis. Because once something like this is actually adopted, it becomes more powerful than it already is. And as one speaker said, it becomes the limit, if you will, the ceiling. And it should not be a ceiling. We should be able to get as much water as we need, and we should be able to look to the cities and see what their wish list is and project and predict for those kinds of numbers. Also, I do think it was a mistake not to encourage or not to request the county's input in the fifth district. A lot of the area is in the county incorporated area, and we don't have any feedback from the county about these numbers. We just have them from the cities of the peninsula. So on that, I would encourage you to reconsider and not do what you've been doing, which is adopting this report and no action. Do not do it. Let's go ahead and move on and get to some better business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dabby.
The next speaker is J. E. Tyneen. Please present your comment. J. E. Tyneen? Please present your comment.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Let's start off. I agree with some of the speakers, Dave Stolt's a, I consider him really brilliant, real gentleman. And I will say, I wish the other speakers would try to stick with not insulting some of the representatives from North County. I'm with the Castroville Community Services District. We probably have more affordable housing in Castroville than open peninsula. I know the Garden Court just was not able to get some, uh, a water allocation. The Sierra School's closing because they can't, they don't have enough students because it's not affordable enough for young families to live there. I just think that'd be a good idea to try to find a way around this to, well, you did have a little extra water, but of course Castroville has a water purchase agreement, so some people might think I'm a little slighted on it. But anyways, we're looking to do its best for both basins. And I hope it can be worked out to where you guys have plenty of water, and it helps my basin too, because I've got seawater within 2,000 feet of my wells. And it would, uh, it would be nice if we could get this, uh, what was mutually beneficial. Again, as far as other speakers, if they can stop making innuendos, it would be great. I think complimenting people like Dave is the way to go. Try to stay positive. Thanks a lot. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Anna Thompson. Please present your comment.
Hi, my name is Anna Thompson. I live in Carmel. I urge this board to please adopt the final supply and demand report. I see no plausible justification to dismiss the report. It was prepared by independent consultants. The report is very comprehensive and transparent. The yearly water consumption totals are based on verifiable statistics. Those are the facts. Those are the figures. Although nobody can accurately predict what the future water needs will be, but, but starting with what the current statistics are, estimates can be made by factoring in various growth rate scenarios. In fact, given the current global pandemic environment of high unemployment, travel restrictions, and looming global recession, I actually anticipate that our water demand will decline rather than grow, at least for the near future. And if in the future, far away from now, I'm sure, we will need more water because of more growth, then there will be different kinds of solutions. There will be better for the environment. That will be better for our economics. It will be better for everybody, and everybody will benefit, especially the, the industries, the hotels, the, the, all the different industries benefit from having lower-priced water, and there is much better solutions. There is the solution. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. In fact, why don't you just see what the Irvine Branch Water District has done to provide for the water and the water bank that they have built, and they consider the salination plant to be the wrong solution for any water needs. Please adopt Dave Stolt's supply and demand report. It is accurate, accurate, detailed, and complete as it can be. The only thing missing from it is politics, which is the way it should be. Do not adopt, do not consider Cal-Am's suggestions because those are just politics. They are not real figures. Thank you so much for your attention. Thank you to the whole board, and thank you especially to Dave Stolt for having been treated so badly from everybody. And when this should be a consensus agreement, there is no reason not to accept it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Scott Dick. Please present your comment.
Thank you, Arlene, board chair, board, water manager district. Thank you. As you know, I'm Scott Dick, Governor Affairs Director for the Monterey County Association of Realtors. I represent the 1,300 members of the association who are small business entrepreneurs, voters that in hundreds of cases, ratepayers in the Cal-Am Service District. I just want to bring your attention and remind you, I'm sure you all have seen it, a letter from the State Water Resources Control Board sent to the Coastal Commission that was dated May 8. One of the paragraphs, there's two paragraphs that stick out to me that I just want to bring out in public. Paragraph two, and this one is probably the most important to the association in that continuing water shortages, water poverty, if you will, the other speakers, I didn't design that word. Continues to hamper creating housing in any kind, regardless of the good intentions of the elected officials trying to address the disaster of the lack of housing availability. You know, we talked a lot about progress for housing affordability, but that's long since been eclipsed by the lack of housing, which is due to the lack of water. So specifically, in the letter, page two, paragraph two, sentence three, I'll be specific, and I quote, "The cease and desist order, including the prohibition against new service connections and against certain increased water deliveries to existing service connections, will only be resolved or looked at after Cal-Am satisfactorily demonstrates that it has obtained a permanent supply of water that has been substituted for water illegally diverted from the Carmel River." And then the second part. Furthermore, on page two, or two pages later, on page four, they drop this bombshell, and I quote, "Even though actual water use within Cal-Am's Monterey Service District area in recent years has been lower than the Public Utilities Commission estimated current demand, State Water Board does not have a basis to conclude that the Public Utilities Commission's prior analysis and determination regarding the water demand, sizing, reliability, or diversity of supply were unreasonable, invalid, or outdated." So I guess you're going to do what you do, do what you want with the district's demand memorandum, but the State Water Resources Control Board has sent the Coastal Commission, and by definition, us, all of us here in the peninsula, the clear message that is to them is, it doesn't mean anything. So the association asks, unfortunately, there's not an option to reject this memorandum. And if there was, we would ask you to reject that. Thank you very much. And Arlene, you're doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Tammy Jennings is the next speaker. Please present your comment.
Yes, I would like to state that I would thank you, Dave Stolt, for your supply and demand report. Since nothing has really changed in the report, I would urge you to adopt the report, and that's it. I would urge you to adopt the report. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Steve Westhoff is the next speaker. Please present your comment.
Hello, Chair Edwards, members of the board. My name's Steve Westhoff. I'm an attorney with the State Water Resources Control Board. I've been working on this particular area. Apologize for the noise. I've been working on the Monterey Peninsula Carmel River issues for the past couple of years. I wasn't planning on speaking. I'm about to sit down to dinner. I just wanted to note that I believe the sentences that were read from Ms. Eileen Sobek, our executive director's, letter to the Coastal Commission, I believe those quotes were accurate. I did want to clarify that the State Water Board and the State Water Board staff I did want to clarify that the State Water Board and the State Water Board staff did not make any specific mention of its determinations about the report that you're reviewing right now. Um, our main overall point is that the Public Utilities Commission made, in their words, in our view, a reasonable and conservative determination as to future and current demand. Um, we recognize there's a gap right now. Just want to make sure that we're not overstating the case about the State Water Board's position. The State Water Board hasn't made any determination one way or the other over the adequacy of pure water Monterey expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alan Hoffa is the next speaker. Please present your comment.
Hi, uh, Ellen Hoffa here. Uh, first of all, Dave Stoltz, you're a gentleman and a scholar. Uh, I've always been very impressed by your presentations to our city council. And, uh, you're very credible and thank you for your work that went into this report. Um, on behalf of the residents that I represent, they have, I think, two interests as it comes to, to water. First, they want to make sure that we have a affordable water supply. And, uh, of course, that is a big challenge with, uh, the D cell. Um, so they, besides an affordable water supply, they want an adequate water supply to meet our housing needs. So I would, um, ask to confirm with staff, if you can, does this report, um, validate that we have enough water supply to meet a regional housing needs analysis of our communities? If it does, then I fully support the report and I thank you all for your work.
Thank you, sir.
Um, this caller, we have a person who's called in on the telephone. Uh, you are unmuted. Please identify yourself and present your comment.
Yes, my name is Barbara Moore and I live in Monterey. I'm a homeowner and taxpayer, lived here for a number of years. And just a couple of quick comments. One is, uh, Councilmember Hoffa mentioned water rates. He's one of the few people that has mentioned that tonight. And I note that none of the people from organizations such as the Realtors or the hospitality industry or anyone else that is trying to say that you should not adopt the report is really talking about one of the big concerns people here have, which is affordable water rates. Um, and talking about affordable housing, first of all, if you can't pay the water rates, you're not going to be able to really, uh, come down here and live anyway. And second, to say that affordable housing hasn't been built in this state or in this area because of a lack of water shows a visible lack of understanding about the complexity of affordable housing. There are innumerable reasons why the state has never put the amount of money in to affordable housing that you would need to meet the supply. And part of it is a lot of people say, not in my neighborhood. And the Real Estate Association is one of the major, um, political forces behind that. I also want to comment on Mr. Stolt. I think that he has really tried his best to do a fair report, not influenced by the strong politics that are around this issue. And I commend him for it. And I think it's a fair and balanced report and I would urge the board to adopt it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chair Edwards, I see that Sir Reece Folsom has raised her hand. I think she wants to comment again. Are you going to receive that comment or not?
No, one request at a time.
I'm sorry, Ms., Chairman Edwards, um, there's three people in my household. It's not just myself.
Um, Mr. Laredo, is that okay?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Edwards, every individual has a right to comment.
All right. Thank you.
We'll, we'll make it brief. It's my husband and he wants to talk about po- water poverty that's been referenced.
All right, please, uh, please identify yourself.
My name is Paco Morales. And I want to just make a comment because I heard that it's like, uh, um, uh, somebody says about something about, uh, water poverty. So one of the things, you know, it'd be different if you go get water with a bucket. That is, uh, water, you know, poverty. And then, um, you know, I work in a landscape and, and, and I see all these wealthy people, how much they pay on the water bills. And, you know, I don't have like a huge garden in my house. I don't have like, you know, I don't, every, 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 everything that I use in my house is, is for my own person, you know? I'm not like, but even though I pay like $200 a month, you know? And it's like, you know, like, I'm not using a lot of water, like all these rich people anyways. So one of the things that I wanted, I want, I wanted to say, the, uh, Calam is focusing on we're grabbing more money. And then, uh, for us, like, you know, like people that, I live in Carmel Valley and just, you know, like, we are just looking how in the last five years, this has been raising the price on the water. And then, um, uh, yeah, this is my comment.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I see another, um, caller. Please identify yourself.
Hi, this is Esther Malkin again with Monterey Peninsula Renters United. I just want to remind everybody when they talk about affordable housing that utilities are a big portion of what is involved when it comes to affordable housing. And I agree with the, the speakers before me that mentioned that we need to have water that's affordable, not just housing that's affordable. And, you know, the Realtor associations and the people that are interested in, in building without factoring in that we have to have affordable water at the same time are being, um, I don't even want to say short sighted, they're just not being realistic to what it's like to live in this area, whether you're a renter or, or, uh, an owner or a business. And one way or another, we're not going to be making, gaining any affordable anything as long as Calam is involved in it. So I commend all the work that's gone into trying to find alternatives to anything and everything that Calam is involved in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is John Tilly. Please state your comment.
Thank you very much, Arlene. So nice to hear you tonight and everybody. Uh, we really want to thank the Water District for all the doing these days. I want to agree with Mr. Pablo Morales who just spoke up a moment ago about water poverty. You know, people that have huge gardens and live in Carmel Valley and are wasting water, that's not the whole point here. The whole point here really is not just water poverty, it's poverty, period. This demand and supply report counts on two things. One of them is rainfall and the other one is borrowing water, taking water from a nearby water basin that has been charged with the idea of being responsible for how they use their own water and asking them to export their water to the peninsula to solve our problems. They've told us they don't want to do that. If you want to know what this community is looking like, if there is true elimination of water because rainfall is not happening and our nearby water basin say, no, thank you, we're going to be responsible and we're not going to shift our water over to you because you want it. And just step outside right now because COVID-19 has given us that environment. This is 20% unemployment. This is what could happen if we don't have water. The CEOs are out there and that we've been told repeatedly by the responsible authorities that if we don't address the situation in a responsible manner, that we will face water shortages. Restaurants will be closed. People will be unemployed. And our local economy, because of decisions being made here by you are resulting in a lack of water, a lack of jobs, and a lack of people who work hard every day to go out and earn a living and go back home and pay their rent and pay their mortgage and pay their water bill. Quit wasting time and money. And let's get busy building a sustainable water supply that works. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly.
Chair Edwards, there are no other raised hands. And I would please ask that everyone, uh, please, um, put their, their, uh, raised hand icon down, uh, as we have heard from everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'm going to give the General Manager, and I think we lost General Counsel's time to answer some of those questions that were laid out there. You can go first, General Manager.
Well, do you, I, I'm, I'm not sure this is the best time. There are answers for every question that's been asked. Um, I appreciated the gentleman from the State Water Board pointing out that what they said was we do not have enough information to contradict or not accept what the Public Utilities Commission ruled on. That doesn't mean that they don't, uh, that they find any fault with what's in front of them. So I appreciate that clarification. But we've heard so many things that, um, aren't really about this report. They're about other things that could be commented upon. Um, I, I stand by the work that was asked of me to do. I, um, in the early eighties, I forecasted demand for Pacific Gas and Electric and investor owned utility for a few years. Um, I've got a background in finance and statistics and numbers and we did do quite a bit of rework, um, where the most recent comments are coming from that the city managers do not agree. They did not offer anything different in this most recent letter, other than you've got this report and we don't like the answers, we're not sure what to offer anymore in the alternative. And no one has offered anything in the alternative. It's been very easy to say something is wrong with this report, but no one's been able to say what.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Laredo, do we have any, do you have any comments, especially with the PUC on this?
Thank you. Uh, yes, I do. I, I know the comment was made that, uh, this report contradicts the position that the district took before the Public Utilities Commission and in other forums. I don't believe it does. I believe this, uh, is, is, uh, Mr. Stolt's update of information with changing circumstances. And I don't believe that the, the, uh, the comments that were made, I don't believe the district took a position that is now contradicting whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. Laredo.
Director Byrne.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Um, I essentially don't support this report. Part of the problem, however, is there's been so much time and which translates to many justifying all the numbers that I think, um, there's a point at which we have to move forward. But I would like to actually look at table one on the supply. And the problem is, to me, this report is an opinion, an opinion that shot in time that may not represent the reality of today, tomorrow, next month, or the next drought. The Pure Water Monterey Project, um, it says it's going to be 3,500 acre feet a year, which it's not doing. Um, the expansion project is iffy right now. Um, the aquifer storage and recovery isn't doing 1,300 acre feet a year. It may at some point, but it hasn't been. Um, the D cell plant in San City, many years is zero. So even our own forecast that we just approved was, um, that we would need 14,464 acre feet to sustain us in a drought situation. And that number doesn't appear at the bottom line on chart, on table one at all. So in order to just move forward and not spend more time on this, I mean, it's a lot of work, a lot of projection, a lot of opinion. Um, I would move that we receive the report as, um, as an opinion, um, but not necessarily, uh, representation of reality for every given situation. That's my motion.
Do we have a second out there? Go on once. Motion down.
I have a comment, Riley.
Okay, go ahead, Director Riley.
I'm, um, I'm concerned that, um, a number of the people who are, regardless of what position they're taking, uh, don't realize the responsibility of the district. The district was formed in 1978 with a specific charge. And it includes the requirement to address the present and, and this is a quote, "The present and future water requirements of the district, water supply available to the district, and the requirements for future capital improvements and the requirements for maintenance and operation." The point I want to make here is that the district has a responsibility to provide this kind of information for the public and for, uh, the, the, the future planning of whatever takes place. Second thing I want to make is that since, um, about 2,000, well, since about 2,000 at least, but, uh, the district has been somewhat focused on trying to create water supply, mainly to supplement the existing supplies, but it's nevertheless, it's a supply. And, uh, since, uh, Bob Brier was elected to the board and I think Jeanie Byrne is the same year, which is about 2,006 or seven or eight, somewhere in there. Um, the district activated its supply committee, water supply committee and the water demand committee to focus specifically on how to address the water supply issue. The district has had now a 10, 12, 14 year, uh, period of focusing on water supply. And this report seems to me just fits another category of, of responsibility. The other thing I wanted to say is that the supply and demand report that, uh, is authored by David Stolt has a number of scientific and data sources and other professional input beyond David Stolt, uh, that's in this report. So David, first of all, has his own opinion, so we'll start with that. Second, three years of more demand data is available and was available and was used in this report that did not exist to the PUC. So those people that go back to the PUC and want to rely on those conclusions are ignoring three years of data. So I want to add that as, as in the report. Ambag is cited as an example. Ambag went to two other sources to confirm their own information. They had a contract with a consultant called Population Research, uh, that provided information to their, uh, to their point. And they had the State Department of Finance as a data source. So Ambag is listed as one source, but in effect, there were two other professional opinions included in the Ambag data. On top of that is a Peter Mayer report that's been financed, paid for by the Marina Coast Water District. There's a Lou House report paid for by the City of Marina. These are professional, uh, engineering and, uh, uh, professional hydro, hydrogeologists and other, uh, skill sets that went into their report. And all of those reports, all of that information is consistent with what the conclusions are that is drawn by David Stolt in his report. My last comment on this is that Calam has left the PUC numbers already. They no longer use the PUC numbers in their own, uh, on their, for their own purposes. And, and all the people who are arguing for the PUC report should go back and ask Calam to explain, why did Calam leave their position and adopt a new position? In the general rate case that exists today, going on today and more than a year ago, In the general rate case that exists today, going on today, and more than a year ago, Cal-Am inserted in their own documents, in their own testimony before the PUC, a new number. A new number that's 9,789 acre feet per year current use. That's consistent with Dave's report and inconsistent with the PUC conclusions, and also inconsistent with many of the advocates that are supporting the PUC document. And beyond just saying Cal-Am, it's the Vice President of Cal-Am, Jeffrey Lineham, who made that comment, and he cited two other consultants that generated those same numbers. David Mitchell consulted, and I can't say his name, Baman Postahorn, two other consultants that they retained to generate the very number that's in their general rate case. And the conclusion of all three of them, the Vice President and the two Cal-Am-paid consultants, agree that the current demand levels are consistent with the Supply and Demand Report. I just want to say that there's so much information and so much consultant professionalism behind this report, I don't see how we can just set it aside and say it's just somebody's opinion. It is not. It's way bigger than David Stolt. He just compiled it. But also, Cal-Am has made its own independent conclusion, and it supports Dave Stolt's conclusion.
Thank you, Director Riley.
Mr. Chair. Mayor Potter has weighed in that he had difficulty getting unmuted during the motion and second.
We haven't made a motion second yet, but I'm about to make the motion.
Well, hold on. So, Mr. Chair, if I might, the discussion's gone too far down the road, but the problem here is that I'm on my phone, but I'm on the internet, so I can't star nine me to unmute myself. So I'm counting on either Arlene or Dave to realize that if there's any discussion, unmute me at that time. So I would have seconded the motion. It's a moot factor now, there's no real point in it. So I just wanted to let it be known that I would have supported the motion, because I do think that the data that's before us is incomplete, but I'll make my comments at another time.
Okay.
Chair, because we're in unusual circumstance here, you should accept a second to that motion.
Well, Jeanne, I appreciate the consideration. My suspicion is that the motion's going to die anyway, so let's move on.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Laredo, put me back on track.
You have no motion on the floor? It would be opportune time to accept a motion.
We have no motions on the floor.
Chair Edwards, I, as Director Hoffman, have a motion to reject Mr. Stolt's analysis.
Okay, we have a motion to reject. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Second it for discussion. Discussion.
To the maker.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I'm a licensed civil engineer, and I emphasize word licensed. With over 30 years of professional experience as a state regulator for the State Water Resources Control Board and the Drinking Water Program for the State Department of Public Health, and I was actually a general manager of a water utility, and I find serious deficiencies in the analysis methodology, analysis assumptions, and data interpretations. Now, I wasn't going to go down this path, except for Director Riley mentioned it. And I will only point out that Mr. Stolt is not a licensed civil engineer in the state of California. Mr. Mayor, who provided a supporting document for Mr. Stolt's analysis, is also not licensed in the state of California. And I can only also add that, for me, as a licensed civil engineer in the state of California, I cannot endorse a report, an engineering report prepared by any individual who is not a professional licensed engineer in the state of California. It would be professional misconduct on my part. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the second?
So as the second of the motion, Mr. Chair, I'm not interested in personalizing this discussion at all. I think Dave's a great guy, and I don't think this is a referendum on his personal character. I enjoy his company, he's a great guy, but I would like to remove the fact that he seems to be well-appreciated by the audience from the discussion. For me, my issue is I just don't think the report is entirely complete. I mean, the city managers weighed in, but really, the 5th District's unincorporated areas is critical. I mean, the river resides or is occupying a major portion of the 5th District. It's in the 5th District. The development pressures in Carmel Valley have been significant over the course of time. So what does that mean? What's that demand look like? I also think that as we go forward, the governor's been a little distracted lately. What are those RENA numbers going to look like once we get back on track? What are we going to do to be able to actually accommodate those numbers coming out of the state? That's a mandate out of the governor's office. Our input's gone. I mean, honestly, it's the end of zoning as we know it if we go ahead and allow RENA numbers to come in as proposed. So what is that going to do? What's the impact on us as a community when we have to get back into that discussion? As a member of the League of California Cities Board of Directors, I can tell you, we're not happy with those numbers and the fact that they're forcing them on us. I mean, it's affordable housing, they can build, actually, the recommendation is you can build a triplex right next to your home in a single-family neighborhood. There's a much more significant discussion to be had out there before we go ahead and set our sights on the amount of water we need and cast it in stone, and I don't want to do that today. I'd support a continuance. That's why I would have supported the previous motion.
This is Director Byrne.
Go ahead, Director.
I mostly have a problem with the supply numbers because they're variables. We've had equipment failures, we've had pipeline failures, we've had issues that make it so that the supply numbers aren't set in stone. That's why I feel just to not spend more time on this same report and to recognize that a great deal of research has gone into it, it's an opinion in time that could be accurate or not, but the numbers vary, they're not set in stone.
Thank you. Any more on the second?
Chair, this is Director Evans. I have a comment. I agree with Director Byrne that the numbers are snapshot in time. I think there was a snapshot in time where our demand right now is supposed to be 12,000 acre feet a year, and our demand is less than 10,000 acre feet a year. So yes, a snapshot in time, and things will change. I also recognize that staying with the higher demand numbers that Cal-Am had put forth with the CPUC, which would have brought us to the 12,000 acre feet a year, also, I think, contributed to the five years of under collections that this community has suffered through paying for. The high demand numbers, the CPUC approves those numbers in the general rate case, and then the community has stopped paying for them because Cal-Am expects that they have based on revenue requirement on the demand numbers. So as the demand numbers have dropped, their requirement for getting paid for water that was not delivered increases. And so I think that revisiting this on a periodic basis and reviewing these numbers that are a snapshot in time is a smart move. So I accept that the numbers that have been put in this report are accurate as of right now, and I think that this report should be approved, and then we revisit it in a few years down the line, as we are supposed to do as a water management district. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a question. Roll call vote, please, on this motion.
Could we repeat the motion, please?
The motion was to reject the report.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Sarah, please. Sarah? Arlene? Somebody do a roll call for me.
All right. Director Byrne? Director Riley?
No.
Director Evans? Director Hoffman? Director Adams? Director Potter? And Chair Edwards? One, two, three, one, two, three. The motion failed on a vote of four to three.
Thank you, Arlene.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
This is Director Evans. I would like to offer a motion to adopt the Supply and Demand Report.
Thank you, I second that. Discussion on the second. Okay, I would like to make a quick comment. This is not a snapshot anymore. This 50 pages of work. Other people outside this area did work on this report. Yeah, I want to end it tonight myself, but it's not a snapshot. It was a snapshot back in September. I think the general manager and everybody that contributed to this report did their work. They did hard work. I am so sorry that we have to go through this, but we are the Water Management Agency. We're the agency that needs to be doing this. Hey, I'm sorry that the CPUC is probably going to get upset, but we are the Water Management Agency, and this is the work we need to do. I'm sorry. But we need to approve this, and three or four more years down the road, we need to do it again. We need to do it again. We shouldn't just shut it down this time. This is something that needs to be done because we're the Water Management Agency. I know a lot of people are not happy with this, but we need to move forward. Any more comments before I call for the question?
This is Director Hoffman, Chair.
Go ahead, Director.
Yeah, I think that, I just want to finalize by saying that it really doesn't matter because the State Water Board, who is my former employer and has lots of qualified, highly-trained individuals, see it for what it is, and they've expressed their views to the Coast Commission. And so regardless of whether this board decides to adopt this plot analysis, I think ultimately it really won't matter. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. Call for the question.
Director Potter? Director Hoffman? Director Riley? Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Byrne? Director Evans?
Yes.
And Director Edwards? Motion approved on a vote of four to three.
Four to three, thank you, Arlene. Arlene, what's the next item, please?
The next item is Item 13. Consider denial of request from City of Monterey re the allocation for 2,02,600 Garden Road, Monterey.
General Manager, who given the report? Dave, please. Thank you, sir. Start all over.
Yeah, so this reflects an ongoing Water Demand Committee subject. We had a meeting in March that addressed additional water that could be used for two Garden Road projects that would get approximately 65 additional units, I'm sorry, 66 additional units that would be 100% affordable if only they could get an allocation of water to proceed, and that allocation would come from the district's reserve allocation. The district holds approximately nine acre feet that's undesignated for any purpose, and is at the discretion of the district board to allocate. When we first heard this at our March meeting, gentlemen you heard from earlier from the State Water Board the day before sent an email suggesting how enforcement would be done relative to Condition 2 of the Cease and Desist Order. And that condition says, no new connections and no increase in use due to a change in zoning or use at an existing service connection. So these two properties reflect existing service connections, but both would be undergoing a change in use by the rule of thumb that the State Water Board uses currently, which is if it is commercial and remains commercial, no change in use. If it is residential, remains residential, no change in use, no reason to look any further. The part here is it would be going from commercial to residential, and also, it was a result of a change in zoning. So in both cases, we felt that additional scrutiny by the State Water Board could be made, and while they do not have enforcement powers against the district's permitting process and the permitting regime, they could in fact ask the company to enforce, and we're not sure what that would look like, but the Public Utilities Commission has, through a very small footnote, said, yes, you can treat your customers differently if they are a customer who has increased use due to a change in zoning or use as it relates to Condition 2 of the Cease and Desist Order. So that being said, out on an abundance of caution, irrespective of the somewhat disagreement between our committee members as to how a district reserve should be used, which we'll talk about at a different item here on this agenda, we felt that it would protect the city from making a huge investment in a project, get the additional units, then come under an enforcement action where not all of the units could be served if in fact you had to ratchet all of the deliveries to the building down to some level they were previously and prior to the increase in the number of units. It's only recently been brought to my attention that perhaps the city would be willing to take that risk and maybe indemnify the district, but because of that significant risk and the fact that the district as a whole was, through its technical advisory committee, was undergoing a peninsula-wide process to better understand what the housing needs are, the committee recommended not allocating water from the district reserve, pushing this into the queue with the other Monterey Peninsula cities and unincorporated county, and waiting to see if we could get some accommodation or traction with the state on water for housing. And that's where it stands.
Thank you.
Director, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Would this project use up all of the reserve?
No, based on the 65 new units at approximately .8, which might be overstating it depending on the number of bedrooms and bathrooms, it would need about 5.4 acre feet.
More than half of the reserve.
Right, and conceptually, the idea would be to replenish the reserve, at which time we were able to do something on behalf of the entire Monterey Peninsula, the other jurisdictions, which on the pace we're at, I mean, is probably best case sometime in the summer.
Okay, any other question, board member?
Chair, this is Director Evans. I do have a few questions.
Go ahead.
First question, is anybody from the City of Monterey available tonight to answer
We think so. Let's check the...
Yes, I think Andy and possibly the sisters are available.
Yeah, Andy Flower is there. Who else did you say?
I saw Hans on the list earlier.
Shall I unmute Andy Flower?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, well, I'd like to ask a question, a couple of questions. What is the timeline for going through the TAC process for us, Dave?
Okay, yeah, Stephanie, can you answer that? We've gotten some late submittals. We've gotten some, well, go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah, I think at this point, the problem... Yeah, I think at this point, the process would be to go to the Water Demand Committee with the preliminary numbers. We've only received responses from the City of Monterey, City of Pacific Grove, the county, and somewhat from San City, although we need to... There's clearly a need to refine numbers. And so I think it's going to be a process that is probably going to take us through the summer at least before we'll be able to actually take any action.
Okay. Thank you. So on page two seventy-seven of our board packet, back in the back that I think fewer people read, there's a list of the remaining allocations for jurisdictions. And it shows that Monterey has a remaining allocation of two point five seven five acre feet, whereas in the letter from the Monterey City Manager, he states that Monterey has zero acre feet in their allocation remaining. So can I get some clarification on whose numbers are more accurate?
So I'll wait for the city to also respond, but the district's number is based on the permits that are issued. And the city may have committed that two point five acre feet to other projects. And I think you'll find that in that case. In almost all cases with the jurisdictions, they give the okay to the developer to pursue the project, but we don't actually take it out of their allocation until they come through us with a project that's permit-ready.
Okay, so I would like to know from the City of Monterey if they have taken this two point five seven five acre feet into account for this project, or if that has been committed to another project. Because if we do not need to use five point four acre feet of our allocation because they already have half of that, I'd like to know.
Arlene, is Andy available?
I will unmute her. Ms. Flower. The directors may have a question for you.
Thank you, Arlene, and thank you to all the directors. In answer to your question, yes, that has already been committed to five ninety-one East Franklin with a resolution. And it's only maybe six months into a two-year cycle, and it's very close to entitlement now.
Okay, thank you.
And the city manager reiterated that via chat.
Okay, wonderful. So the more that I thought through this, it sounds like a lot of this is a conflict between the state mandating affordable housing for those jurisdictions to build, and the State Water Resources Control Board putting forth condition two, no new water on a site or through the rezoning, as you clarified before, Dave. My question is, what action has Monterey taken with our state legislature and with those state agencies to resolve this conflict? Whether, you know, to find out who's right in this? Is it the state to mandate housing? And the Water Resources Control Board will, you know, make an allowance for this water to go forward for the site? Or is it the State Water Resources Control Board that is the primary? And the housing mandate will take a secondary position? And I don't think that is for the Water Management District to decide. And I'd like to know what progress has been made utilizing our local representation, Assemblymember Stone and Senator Monty on this.
Let me weigh in. And also, Arlene, please mute Director Potter. So SB three thirty was passed late last year, two thousand and nineteen, which, in effect, its findings declared a housing emergency in the state of California. The department that's tasked with seeing out some of its mission is housing and community development. And they are genuinely surprised that there would be another state department that has what's tantamount to something that's outlawed in SB three thirty, which is no local agency can impose a moratorium on housing starts. That would be found unlawful under SB three thirty. But what's happened here is the cease and desist order, at least in this regard, does the exact same thing. So there is a conflict. The City of Monterey, and to some extent now, the City of Seaside have mobilized. I'd say the City of Monterey is a little further ahead in trying to get a local coalition together and leverage our delegation. I'm sure that either Andy or... I didn't see Kim Cole on, but Andy can speak to that if you want to know more about it.
Just, I just feel like if the district moves forward with this or doesn't move forward with this, it's almost irrelevant until the dispute between the state agencies can be resolved, so.
Right, and in fact, that's part of the logic behind the denial of this up-fronting of water. We're not saying, hey, stop this whole thing. We are saying that the email from the state board attorney was cold water thrown on it at that moment. That they're paying closer attention to everything we do. And so many of the projects that we've permitted in the past that didn't need a new meter, but may have been construed under condition two to warrant additional scrutiny by the state, never received the additional scrutiny by the state. It remained very consistent with our resolution that our board passed as to what is a change or what's an increase in use due to a change in zoning or use. But part of that unified Monterey Peninsula-wide effort that we're... You know, we just brought the numbers in, we're due May first, and we're trying to wrap them all up, and Stephanie was referring to that. Once we had a known need, we were going to try to take that to the state and say, all right, what avenues might we have where you can recognize the requirements of SB three thirty in housing? The need to be a regulator as well as meeting the health and safety goals that the CDO seems to say if there's a health and safety issue, we need accommodation to be able to address it. And we haven't done that yet. We have had a conversation with the state board that this is coming, that it's in conflict. And where, when this process started, we thought we would treat it the way we did CHUMP years and years ago, decades ago, which was to make district findings and free up water for this purpose, make allocations to the cities. Cities could choose to use it for housing or not. It's their allocation once it's delivered. But now we're not so sure we should do that without at least having the discussion about is there is there room for both housing and community development and the State Water Board to both fulfill their mission as regulators, but still make something happen? So that will be our goal in the next couple of months.
For the Chair, this is Director.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Well, I agree with Director Evans that it's kind of a fight that we've tried to take on, but ultimately, it's probably between the city and the State Water Resources and the state of California. But also, it seems probably not the right approach to give more than half of our reserve water to one city. I think the cities that have equal need sort of side based on access to water out. So I would support holding off on allocating this to one city.
Thank you. Director, go ahead, Director Adams.
Thank you. Thanks very much. So I had a couple of questions as well. And my first question is, why is this item, number thirteen, coming up before we consider number fourteen? The disposition of the district reserve allocation? That doesn't make sense to me. But be that as it may, let me just ask a couple of questions. So has staff asked whether the city would be willing to withdraw its request and then resubmit it at a later time instead of having us deny it? If, in fact, that's possible, that they could do that, wait until there have been discussions with the State Water Board to decide if they want to keep the item before us today? That would be, you know, one thought. And then, secondly, and then how long would we envision that it would take for the State Water Board to, you know, to come to closure on this? And then, finally, then, would new meters be required for this project? And if so, given that the district reserve would not allow new meters to be set until the CDO has lifted, would the water even be really allowed? Is that what you were saying earlier, Dave? Be allowed for these housing projects?
Yeah, of those three things, I think the only one I can address right now is the last one, which is we've made it completely understood by all of the proponents that they should only be looking at projects that can be engineered with existing meters.
Okay.
That we recognize the moratorium is what the moratorium is.
Right, okay, good. You know, truthfully, as I look at this and I look at what the regional housing numbers are, and six hundred fifty is a lot of recent housing, affordable housing numbers to be able for the City of Monterey to do. The City of Monterey is working so hard at ensuring that there is affordable housing. And there are so many places where it doesn't work, and then there are places where it does work. And in my opinion, just what I know, I feel like that is an excellent location to have affordable housing because it's on a transportation route. It's, you know, it's walkable for kids to be able to go to school. You know, it has so many of the right things for it. So I'm having a difficult time thinking that we're in a position of being able to help the City of Monterey provide housing for people who, not even before them, but particularly now, so desperately need places where they can afford to live. Especially when we are looking at being able to start to rev up the economic engine again. My hope is that we're going to have businesses where people are going to be able to live and afford to live so that they can work here. So, but I am curious whether the city has, you know, has thought about not having this request be with us today? Wait until the State Water Board decides if they, you know, how things can go, and then bring it back to us rather than having us deny it? I will never deny an affordable housing project like this. I just couldn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Adams. Any more board comments?
Chair, I still had another question.
Go ahead.
How close is this project to being ready to go? I mean, is it in the planning stage? Is it in the design stage? Is the developer waiting outside with the backhoe? And where are we in this process, and when does this decision need to be made?
It's almost shovel-ready.
And what does almost mean? Six months? Two weeks?
No, I think Andy can probably address that. We did hear from the developer during our Water Demand Committee meeting, and he said, one of these parcels, he's pretty much at mobilization, and the other one, he can wait a little bit, but I don't think we got clarity on that. So to the extent, somebody from the city, Hans or Andy, if you want to raise your hand.
Yeah, so if Hans is on the call, I'd like to hear from him.
I can unmute him if this is the appropriate time.
Go ahead, Arlene.
Please.
Oh, I'm not, no, excuse me, I misread that. Let me go to the attendees. I apologize.
Chair Edwards.
Yes.
I thought we were in the questioning period, not on the comment of directors. Of the... So if you could clarify for me, that'd be great.
Yes, we are on the question, but the applicant is probably out there, and we're trying to give him a chance to speak to.
Okay, I can unmute Mr. Usler if it is the appropriate time. Chair Edwards.
Go ahead, he's the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Edwards, Directors. This is Hans Usler. Both projects are almost shovel-ready to answer Director Evans' question. One project is ready for the July timeframe, and the other one is October. So it's really not feasible for us to go through the waiting period and hope that there might be a change of heart coming from the State Water Resources Board. Yes, your general manager explained it correctly. We are trying to build a coalition to highlight the challenges that you, as the board, has, as well as that we, as cities, have, is basically, we want to provide affordable housing. You're sitting on nine acre feet of water, and no other community right now is shovel-ready. And frankly, also to the Director Burns, we really don't care where people live, as long as we can build affordable housing in our water district. If someone else has a project with adding over fifty percent of affordable housing to two different project sites, by all means, please go forward. We have spent all water in the City of Monterey and allocated every single drop of water to affordable housing. So this is for us now an opportunity to ask the Water Board to send a clear signal out that you're supporting affordable housing. We understand the challenges that Dave has lined out or explained to all of you and all of us. But the point is, your people here that have elected you want affordable housing. They don't want not just only affordable water rates, and that's what you just discussed. But now it's the time to allocate the water reserve, which is real water, to two worthy projects that are shovel-ready and that would really improve the situation for the City of Monterey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
I have one more question for the general manager.
Go ahead.
So Molly asked if there were meters that needed to be set, and I didn't hear the clear answer on that.
Yeah, so our understanding is both of these were master metered buildings, and that they would be engineered to use the existing meter situation. That's... The ground rules we sent out to everybody were we can only look at projects that have existing meters. And Kim Cole and Andy Flower at the city have been pretty diligent about only bringing us projects on their list that meet that criteria.
So the individual housing units would have the inline meters?
Yeah, Stephanie, do you want to weigh in? I mean, that's our requirement.
Yes, they would have inline meters, but they do have large meters available on site.
So they have the capacity for the inline meters?
If they don't have the capacity, they have to engineer the system to work.
Yeah.
If you said they had large meters, do they have meters that are sized for the size of the project?
That I don't know. I have confirmed that there are... Well, I've confirmed the size of the meters at both of the properties. They do have meters. I don't know if they're sufficient to take care of the needs of the project.
Is there any problem with CalM increasing the size of a meter? I mean, if they have a meter set, I thought that was the criteria. They couldn't set new meters, but they could enlarge existing meters?
No, CalM will not enlarge meter if there is the potential for increased use on a site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any more questions from the board?
I have a question, please. I don't...
Go ahead, the rest of them.
Is it possible this item could be continued and just held pending progress on any discussions whether the city and the coalition for affordable housing and others make any progress with any of our legislators or the state?
Well, that's going to be what happens anyway. So the the issue here is the developer and the city's relationship with the developer and the timeline. All the other potential needs, that's unfortunately, the timeline we're on is collect their data in May, synthesize that data, have another either TAC meeting or Water Demand Committee meeting, probably lower the expectations on that need to something that's reasonable, and then take that as part of the conversation without being able to walk up to Sacramento and say, here's all we're talking about. We don't really have a starting place yet, and we're really not quite there yet. So it's, you know, the soonest is over the course of the next six weeks, and more likely is it's going to be six to twelve to even pull the argument together and get the coalition together. There's folks, so there's non-agency folks, there's United Way, there's Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, there's Land Watch, there's a whole bunch of folks in line who want to see housing move forward even under the conditions we're in. And so I think we've got to resolve this inherent conflict between, as I said, SB three thirty and... SB 330 and cease and desist order.
So question.
Go ahead.
If we approve this, what kind of legal problems does that create?
If we approved it? Yeah. So, right, and that's, and again, I may have said it near the outset, but our concern was we didn't want to jeopardize either the city or the developer by saying, you could have an enforcement action done through CalM at the urging of the state water board. And they might say, well, our best solution is to put in a flow restrictor at the single point of entry, the master meter, and dial that usage back to where it was in, I don't know, October of 2009. Now, part of the problem we're having with the state in this six and a half plus years discussion has been the definitions of baselines and how you compute what an increase in use is and how you enforce. We've never really gotten to agreement, so we don't really know what the ground rules are. If, if we as a board said, yeah, let's, if they can go to, you know, make, double the number of units and make that second group of units 100% affordable, and that's in the public interest, let's do this. Let's free up 5.4 acre feet, or whatever the number ends up to be when they actually come in with plans. I, I just worry, what if we said, we told you so, and there isn't enforcement action? Then you've got a project that's been built, you know, hopefully, maybe it doesn't finish until we've got a clear path on permanent water supply. But if you had a project that's built that uses more and an enforcement takes place, I don't know what the ramifications of that enforcement would be. Personally, I'd like the district to be indemnified by the city if we were to choose to do that.
Okay.
So I would agree with Director Adams. I've always thought that was the perfect place for affordable housing. I mean, it's probably one of the best places. And I would hate to see us deny this as opposed to maybe continuing it for some sort of resolution.
Okay, Mr. Laredo, do you have anything?
I do agree with your general manager that if the board does decide to proceed, that a condition be placed on the use of the water, that there be an indemnity agreement and a hold harmless, because I, from what I understand with the state board, they are not likely to be a paper tiger. I think that they would act.
Thank you, Mr. Laredo. Any more board members have any questions?
So, yeah, it would be back to the city of Monterey, though, and that would be what would happen if we, if we postponed this, if we rolled this back. You know, I think I've already heard your answer.
Yeah, so we're going to continue on the path that we're on for this overall effort that we started, you know, for all the jurisdictions. So they would just have to choose whether they think that they can be part of that on these two projects, or go ahead and authorize one of these projects with just the normal 20% set aside and not the additional 100% affordable. It, it just comes back to their relationship with their developer and money and time.
Okay. Arlene, are we ready to open it up to the public, please?
Yes, we are.
Go ahead.
Chair Edwards, and I have many comments here. I'm going to interrupt. Okay, I see the first speaker is Fred Muir. Mr. Muir, please present your comment.
You better tell him, no.
Mr. Muir, did you have a comment on this item?
No idea, no, I did not.
All right, thank you. Can you please put your hand down? Thank you, Mr. Muir. I have another caller. Please identify yourself and make your comment. Do you have a comment?
I think you accidentally unmuted my phone. I do not have a comment.
Great, can you please enter star nine into your phone so that your raised hand will go away? Thank you. Mark Kelly, do you have a comment? Mr. Kelly, do you have a comment?
No.
Thank you. John Tilly, do you have a comment?
I do not, thank you very much.
All right, if any of you do not have a comment, please disable your raised hand icon. Thank you. Andy Flower, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Thank you, Andy, please proceed.
My name is Andy Flower, I'm principal planner at the city of Monterey, and I want to start out by saying, we are willing to absorb the risk along with our developer, Brad Slama. We are willing to offer the district indemnity. This is, this is a project that is very time-sensitive. If, if this doesn't get acted upon today, we, there, there will be a loss, a loss in opportunity for affordable housing for the 66 units that could otherwise be 100% affordable in an area that, as was mentioned, is well-served by transit. And we're working with MST, we're hoping to increase that for other, other sites along Garden Road that are, are in the conceptual phase now. I, I want to also bring the director's attention to the fact that while a couple of other cities responded to the TAC request, we were the only ones who responded, to my knowledge, with actual projects that are close to shovel-ready. This is very important for the future of our city and, and for recovery coming out of COVID. Arena numbers are the largest of all of the jurisdictions that are regulated by the district, and we are very centrally located. We see this as being an asset to the wider region, and we would appreciate your consideration in reconsidering the denial. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next speaker, Hans Usler, do you have a comment? Mr. Usler, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
Yes, thank you so much. Chair and directors, I realize this is not an easy decision for you because frankly, you are being warned by, by your legal counsel that the State Water Resources Control Board is, according to his words, not a paper tiger in this case. Your general manager gives you the right advice that a general manager or a city manager has to give its board. And as a, as a city manager, I tell you, I would give our city council similar advice, knowing quite well that when I give advice to our city council members, they many times elect to ignore it and do the right thing. The right thing is sometimes to do something that is standing up for the community, standing up against an agency that has outlived with their regulations the sheer effects of the poverty and affordable housing needs we have here on the Monterey Peninsula. And you all got elected into office and standing on a platform, which is doing the right thing. Tonight is one of those nights. Tonight is one of those nights where you have to do the right thing, and I appreciate very well, very much, what Supervisor Adams was saying. How can you vote against affordable housing? I wish we would have the time to say, it's good. Let's take another 12 weeks or 16 weeks and try to convince the State Water Resources Board that we should have a truth on this topic and should figure out something. But 70 families, 70 housing units for affordable housing will not be built. We do not have the time. We have a developer who is serious about building those apartments. He has a track record of being successful. The funding is in place. The plans are almost drawn up, and as I indicated, we are shovel-ready. I appeal to you to work with us, vote with your heart, remember why you got into elected office, do the right thing, and allow us to proceed with your signal further down the road to help with our arena numbers and affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have someone who has called in. I have just unmuted your mic. Please identify yourself and present your comment.
Hi, Chair Edwards and members of the board. This is Steve Westhoff from the State Water Resources Control Board again. I am indeed the individual who expressed my concerns with this project when I saw it on the agenda. Quickly, the cease and desist order that the state water board adopted in 2009 followed a 1995 order for CalM to cease unauthorized diversions from the Carmel River. CalM, the Monterey District, continues to divert over, and I believe it's something northwards of 3,000, probably closer to 4,000 acre feet per year. There's a significant unauthorized diversion that has continued. And the problem that the state water board has had with the district's interpretation of the state water board's order and with its use of credits, is that there is a clear condition in the 2009 cease and desist order that says that CalM cannot, one, serve new service connections, and two, serve existing service connections that have undergone a change in zoning or use. Now, there is possible that there are projects that have gone under the radar. This is not one of them. I didn't intend for this to be a showdown, and certainly, the state water board is not against housing. This project can move forward if it uses the amount of water that the property used previously. I understand there's an issue about what or is not, what is or is not the baseline for that use. But I think it's safe to say that if it didn't use any more water than it did in 2009 or prior to the rezoning, it'd be okay. State Water Board's watching this. I'm not going to speak to what the board should do tonight, but we certainly are following. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kevin Dayton, please present your comment.
Yes, Kevin Dayton, Government Affairs Liaison, Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. First, I'll mention, in the last item, somebody from the public mentioned affordable housing doesn't get rejected because of shortage of water. And I guess that person had not looked at the next item on the agenda because here we have a water issue that's going to undermine affordable housing. I'm quite familiar with this project because I've had the experience of dealing with it as it's in support on behalf of the chamber, as it's moved through the Planning Commission and City Council. And, yeah, there's a lot of great groups supporting it. Land Watch, Monterey County, Monterey, Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. You probably also know there are people who oppose this project, and of course, they cited water at the time. My suggestion for you is rather than having this negative resolution before you to delay, to deny it, you should have a resolution saying, we're going to double our efforts to see if we can work this out. The staff report doesn't go into the details about how realistic or feasible it is to wait until a peninsula-wide solution can be brought forward. But the city of Monterey needs us to attain its regional housing needs allocation. This is something worth putting extra time into trying to get approved or trying to figure out something with the developer to do this. And that's what the resolution should be. The resolution should be to, to have staff work on this and get the, get the problem resolved. Don't deny it now because I think you're starting the ball rolling to have the whole thing collapse. So instead of having a negative resolution here, somebody should substitute a positive one to add extra time and effort to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Hoffman, please present your comment.
Hi, thank you so much for all of your comments about this project. As far as waiting for the issue to be resolved, I think you just heard the member from the State Water Resources Board. That ain't going to happen very easily or quickly. So if you wait for the issue to be resolved by the State Water Resources Control Board, you're essentially saying no to these affordable housing units. It's a timely matter. We have a developer ready to go. I've been trying to push affordable housing in the city of Monterey since I was elected in 2012. We've been able to build 36 units of affordable housing in that time. I'm very proud of it, but it's a small number. It is a fraction of what our community needs and deserves. So please do what you can to help us get this done. I consider you our partner. You are our partner. Director Edwards said, we're the water board. We figure out what demand is, we figure out what supply is, we make it happen. And I'm, I'm asking you and begging you to try to work with us as a partner. Affordable housing, wow. This, this project delivers more affordable housing in, in one swoop than what we've been able to do in a decade. So this is just very, very significant. We have arena number of 650 units. We've built 113 total. We have 534 more to build, and water is a significant challenge. This project is a regional benefit. We have, a majority of our workers commute into our city from the cities all around us. That puts a demand on our highways, that puts pollution in the air. It, it's hard on them to commute. This is a, this project would be a regional benefit. I would say, if you're concerned about indemnification, make that part of the resolution, that, that, that your support is contingent upon the city of Monterey indemnifying you. And I would support that. I would ask you to join with us in the political endeavor and direct staff to write a resolution to the State Water Resources Board and to our representatives in support of this project and in support of affordable housing. So please, support us, give us the water we need, take action to protect yourself legally, and join with us in our political battle because we need your help. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kelly DeWolf, please present your comment.
Hello, thank you, members of the board. My name is Kelly DeWolf. I'm speaking on behalf of the United Way of Monterey County. Our organization is made up of a diverse network of partners advocating for the financial stability of families in Monterey County. And others have already stated this, but housing in the city of Monterey has been an ongoing crisis. Some other people have already mentioned the arena numbers. I just wanted to also add that for decades, Monterey has been producing new housing at a rate or below the increase in demand, and the need is even more urgent right now. And we are seeing this firsthand as a community organization on the front lines addressing emergency response in the county during COVID-19. Our information service 211 has seen an increase of 200 to 300% in its calls and texts since the shelter in place began. And since the beginning of shelter in place, 20% of those calls that we've received were related to closing our shelter. And in the past year, that number was even higher. As part of our efforts to engage the community and focus resources to improve lives in Monterey County and to advocate for those desperately needing affordable housing, we support the city's request for less than eight acre feet of water using the district's water reserve to advance the shovel-ready projects. to advance the shovel ready projects along Garden Road. The City of Monterey's project would have a significant community impact over the next few years and this is an impact that would be greatly needed by essential workers and residents of our community. So on behalf of the United Way and those of you, sir, please reconsider the denial of this water allocation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gabriel Sanders, please present your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Monterey County Student Housing Coalition. And having done a little bit of research coming into this and admittedly not being a professional, but a policy analyst who graduated from the Middlebury Institute of International Studies just about a mile or so away from where this housing development is set to be built. I just want to throw in a few things that I found. This is an unprecedented time related to COVID-19. One of those unprecedented effects will be on tourism and the UN World Tourism Organization projects that there will be 20% fewer tourists moving around the world over the next year or so. And that's just a preliminary estimate. So that means that there will be nearly a million fewer people visiting Monterey this year and possibly a similar lower number next year. That means a lot of water is going to be available for use. I spoke with Dave Stoll in writing my master's thesis to earn my MPA. And one thing he told me about directly, we were sitting in Captain and Stoker, a business that's currently struggling. Over coffee, he told me that one thing that he wishes the district could do better was work with water as a fungible resource, move things around when it can be moved around. And I would just encourage you, as other people who have called into this have, to innovate. I'm 30 years old and I will be inheriting the effects of this being myself. I lived in Monterey. I studied Monterey. I wrote my thesis about expanding the water supply on the peninsula with the help of people like David Stoll and other professionals in the area, including Hans Ousler. I just want to remind you that there hasn't been a recovery of the 500 or so acre feet that were allocated for tourism since 2001. As of 2019, only 76% of that pre-2001 acre foot usage has resumed. That means, as of right now, there are at least 500 acre feet available for allocation based on the numbers calculated there. So my numbers may not be right on. I just would like to encourage you to look at what is available, what has been allocated and for what, and based on what values. You can allocate water for new businesses. Those businesses may not reopen in the next year, but this is an opportunity to allocate water for something meaningful. And you've heard it from people before me, but please take this opportunity to do just that, innovate. Thank you.
Thank you.
PK Difenbaugh, please proceed.
Thank you very much. This is PK Difenbaugh, Superintendent Monterey Peninsula Unified School District. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I wanted to begin by saying that I'm speaking as an matter too.
Sir, you gotta speak up.
We're unable to hear you. Mr. Difenbaugh? Yes, please begin.
Okay, start his clock over, please.
All right, I've begun the time again.
All right. So thank you very much. Just tonight, I'm calling as an individual.
It keeps on fading out.
Mr. Difenbaugh, we cannot hear you. All right, I'm going to go on to the next caller.
Impact on our budget. And the primary reason why it's difficult to have kids is it's very difficult to afford to live in the community. And Monterey, so Foothill Elementary, which is a school a stone's throw from the development, was once a school well over 400 students, is now a school of 280 students and declining rapidly. Without increased student body, schools such as Foothill will be difficult to keep open and the district will be losing in terms of the amount it costs versus the average daily attendance of a school like that. So the second major issue is teacher and teacher retention. Every year, our district loses between 80 to 100 teachers. And in our exit interviews, the vast majority say they would like, but could not afford to live in their community and are for housing that is more affordable. So you can imagine that's 20% of our teaching force turning over every single year. The impact that that has on the children and their education is astronomical. So I ask you tonight to take a stand and take a bold stand to support the affordable housing project and allow this project to continue. It's always easy or easier as an elected board to wait. It's very difficult to take a stand and I understand that, but we're asking you to do it tonight. It'll benefit our district tremendously. It'll benefit our children tremendously. There's few times when board decisions really can change the course of a community and I believe this is one of those times. So I'm urging you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have someone calling in. I have unmuted your phone. Please present. Please present your comment.
Hi, it's Ester Malkin with Monterey Peninsula Rovers United. I wanted to bring up a point that hasn't been brought up yet. Looking at these projects that may present themselves down the road, we are in a position of having to kick the can down the road for so many years that we are in a crisis when it comes to affordable housing and we really can't afford to keep doing that. The reason why I mentioned that, a point that hasn't been brought up, is that the City of Monterey does not have the land that some of our neighbors do to build on in the future. And that's one of the reasons why a cookie cutter approach to water regarding any new affordable housing should not be applied by any agency, whether it's the district or the state. And I really hope the state person on this call listens to that very clearly because if you become familiar with the City of Monterey's property lines and the few areas that we have that we have available to build on, we have no other location that we could make such a significant dent in the arena goals that the state is asking us to, which pre-COVID was actually going to double in the near future. So by becoming an obstacle to the very thing that the state is demanding our city to do is not the same as when you ask another city that has plenty of locations to build on. We don't have that luxury. So this has even more importance than, you know, just another project to be built. So this is a regional problem that we have and it does affect everybody in the region, which is, you know, why this project more than likely would have support from surrounding cities because workers come into Monterey from those cities and they need housing and vice versa. So I would love to see the district become a partner in this region. And I want to echo what the city manager said earlier of doing the right thing. You know, people elect officials to do the right thing for what is the need of that particular area. And this particular project is the only way that we can make a one shot difference in these arena goals. And we need that to happen. And I hope that you guys can participate in being a good partner with us on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Mark Kelly, please present your comment. Mr. Kelly, did you have a comment to make? All right.
No, I do not. I apologize. I'm not sure why that's happening. Excuse me.
That's fine. Thank you, sir. Paul Bruno, please present your comment.
Thank you. Well, today is, this is a very sad commentary on our community. You know, to listen to this, what we're going through, you know, it stresses, once again, the importance of supply. When I say it's sad, it is sad that we fought supply solutions for so long, but now here we are. We're begging for an opportunity to provide affordable housing. And I know as a developer, I've done projects. It is very difficult to bring a project forward. And I'm talking about regular projects. It is extremely difficult to bring forward an affordable project. And I know what they're trying to do out there. They're trying to repurpose that area for a better use and it's a much needed use. You know, traffic isn't because there's more jobs on the peninsula. Traffic's because people can't afford to live here. So I hope that you find a way to reconsider the denial and try to be creative to find a way to partner. If you need a indemnification, ask for indemnification, but do something somehow to give this developer a chance to make this work. I heard what the state said and they're right. They want to hold our feet to the fire because we have failed them in so many ways. But we have to find a way to house our people and I hope that you can at least take this opportunity before it goes away because it will go away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Williamson, please present your comment.
Hi, good evening, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District Board. My name is Tyler Williamson. I am a council member with the City of Monterey. And, you know, I just really see this as an opportunity for us to get through, rip through some of that red tape and give attention to an increasing, an ever-increasing issue that we're seeing, you know, not just on the peninsula, not just within the state. We're seeing this nationally. We're seeing this globally. This is a growing issue and particularly when we are in moments like this, you know, we're hearing the stories come out more. Those people that are the most vulnerable, I think this is the time. The time is ripe for this. And, you know, if COVID-19 can give that a little bit of added pressure or clout to you all as decision makers here to feel a little bit more comfortable with going over the edge there, I'd say take it because this is a lot of units and I don't think that that passes any of you all. You know, the benefits, I hear the story of Gabe Sanders who spoke just a little bit ago, a recent grad student. Those are the people that are mostly affected by the unaffordability of housing and the impact that, the hot impact that the lack of housing supply has on the peninsula, particularly affordable units. This puts more pressure on all of us as a community, but more so as elected officials. Many people have referenced this, but these are the times when I feel that, you know, us as elected, that elected individuals, that's why we're put in these positions because it's not easy to make these decisions. Positive support of this effort gives further testament to the good work you all do for our community in furthering conservation efforts. We can do this because the water is there and we will continue working to create efficiencies with our water demand and find a project that will add to our water supply. So we can do this. We will do this. I understand the pressure you are on as board members, though this is a win-win with the City of Monterey providing security against legal liability. I ran as the youngest person to ever be elected to the city council because again, this affects young people so disproportionately. And I think that this is a true opportunity for us to really look hard and deep about preventing ways for us to continue kicking the can down the road and solving these problems now. So please, 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 I ask for your support and partnership. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madeline Smith, please present your comment.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, my name is Madeline Smith. I'm a current graduate student at the Middlebury Institute of International Studies. And I think you guys have heard many wonderful arguments in support of investing this water in this affordable housing development. I just want to reiterate some of the things that some people have already said and kind of consolidate by saying that this is a really wonderful opportunity to make a long-term investment in our community. You've heard the argument of the time sensitivity on this development plan. You've heard the argument of the lack of affordability for important professions such as teachers. That's a direct investment in our youth. Those are students that will grow up and continue to give to this community. You've heard the argument of how hard it is to get this, all these pieces and all these ducks lined in a row. And you've also heard the argument of sometimes you have to make the decision with your heart and not with your head. And I think that given the amount of bang for your buck, if you will, that you could get with this decision tonight and the amount of units that are on the line, I really ask that you use your heart and hopefully your head too, because to my head, it makes sense to make this investment of this water in our community and in the surrounding community because it leaks out of Monterey and into other communities as well. So I hope that you will change the denial of this motion and be in support of giving this water to the City of Monterey for the affordable housing unit. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Val.
Kim Cole, please present your comment.
Thank you very much, Board of Directors, for this evening's conversation. My name's Kimberly Cole. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Monterey. And as all of the speakers have shared with you, this is a very unique opportunity in our community and quite frankly, unprecedented. It's an opportunity to provide more affordable housing than we have ever been able to achieve before. Instead of just emphasizing those comments more, I want to reach out to Mr. Westerhoff who's on the call from the State Water Resources Control Board. I want to let you know that we've heard your concerns and comments and we're interested in working with the State Water Resources Control Board and you on this issue. We believe there's a way to exempt this project from your enforcement and strive towards the common goals of providing affordable housing along transit oriented development, along transit lines, and that's climate ready. And some of those opportunities are, is that there's no increase in water meters. There's no additional meter. There's adequate water credits on site. We believe there's common ground here as we work with the State of California broadly, with the Department of Housing and Community Development who is establishing these robust goals for us, the legislature who continues to pass legislation encouraging affordable housing and for us to achieve those goals. And we believe the State Water Resources Control Board can be part of that solution. So we welcome the conversation and in part of that, we asked the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District to join us in our efforts and approve this allocation tonight so we can move this forward in providing affordable housing for the Monterey Peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Hamm, please present your comment.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emily Hamm. I'm a Monterey resident of almost two years. I'm a newly graduated public administration student from the Middlebury Institute of International Studies and the newest member of the MBF Housing Team. And I speak from all three of these positions when I say that this decision nor this project can afford to be delayed. can afford to be delayed. Many of these points I intended to make have been said tonight, but I want to underscore that these add to the need for affordable housing, and it is more critical than ever. MBEPS recently published our COVID-19 housing response position paper, and we've been convening weekly calls with regional housing leaders. There is clear consensus in these discussions that housing is healthcare, and affordable housing is one of our leading mitigation strategies to this crisis. We didn't have time to delay affordable housing projects before the COVID-19 crisis, and we have even less time now. So I ask you to act, and with the overwhelming majority of Monterey residents who are not only in favor, but so desperately need affordable housing to keep them healthy and safe, please consider the denial and allow this project to continue.
Scott Ditt.
Thank you, Arlene.
Please present your comment.
Thank you, Arlene. As you know, I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Monterey County Association of Realtors. Wow, wow, wow. We've never had a chance at 100 affordability. We've heard 10%, 20%, anything more than that has never penciled out, and yet the city of Monterey has a chance at 100% affordability. And this is a chance for the Water Management District to take a risk. This is really unprecedented. And, you know, when I moved here, I've only been here 20 years, but when I moved here, people said, well, the Water Management District has been against water supply projects. And they bring into the argument, well, remember, the Chair of the Water Management District fought against the D-Sup plant in 1993, hoping to get the dam passed, and the dam failed. 20 years later, we're arguing about 100% affordable housing. And to me, that is remarkable. And I can't imagine why the district wouldn't take the chance and vote to support this. Thanks. That's it.
I have Colin. I've just unmuted your mic. Please present your comment.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Good evening, board members. This is Ashley with the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, otherwise known as MBEPS. For those of you who don't know, we consist of over 85 public, private, and civic entities located throughout the region, and our mission is to improve the economic health and quality of life in the Monterey Bay. We commend the staff for bringing this item to the board. It's certainly a convoluted and complicated one, as we've heard. And I just want to say that the proposed development at Site 2600 Guarded Road is really by far the largest economically viable shovel-ready project in Monterey, which, yes, is one city, but given its central location among all jurisdictions regulated by the district, that, you know, near jobs, near transit, near services, it would truly benefit the entire peninsula. And the housing crisis in our region is well documented, and we all know that it's been compounded by COVID-19. And so as part of our efforts, we support the city's request for less than 6 acre feet of water, or whatever it is, using those districts' water reserves to advance this project. Inflation of water for projects like this is also supported in our blue paper recommendation, which was just released and can be found in our website, where we discuss the complexities of the water issues on the peninsula, and show that multifamily dwellings need less water than single-family homes on average. And also, I just want to say too, that, you know, we agree that additional water should not be taken beyond what is already been allocated from the Carmel River. The city of Monterey is not requesting that. They are requesting water that has already been allocated, that the district holds in reserve. It should not matter where the water is used on the peninsula, what the meter size is, nor whether there is a change of use, which are all, which are three parts of condition to the Carmel River Seizing Assist Order, that we, alongside several residences, businesses, nonprofits, as well as the elected officials from across the peninsula, are ready to address, should it be supported by the district, and presented before the State Water Resources Control Board. So should this board make the commitment to allocate the requested reserve water, you and the city have our complete support of pulling the masses together, which is what we are poised to do, even at the state level, to advocate for a negotiated settlement with the control board and to work through any other obstacles that are not in alignment with the governor's housing emergency policies. So we urge the board to please revisit staff's recommendation and encourage the participation and support from its member jurisdictions to stand together, commit to releasing the water, and urge the control board to reinterpret the effects of the current CDO. So thank you for your leadership and commitment, support this effort. And remember too, that everything is impossible.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Chair Edwards, I see no other raised hands, I see no other public comment.
Thank you. Back to the board. GM, do you have any comments?
Just a couple very quickly. We, the district, have been participating in most of the initiatives and things that you hear about, the speakers. We've sat on that blue paper that Ashley Gower just referred to with the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, met with United Way, you know, we've been doing our best to be active in this sector. You have every right to free the water up for this purpose. Even if we do get indemnification, we will by our nature be forced to fight shoulder-to-shoulder with the project proponents to try to see this thing through with minimal impact to the community. So we'd be, you know, we'd be in it if you want us to get in it.
Thank you, General Manager. General Counsel, do you have any comments on this?
Legally, you may approve the request if you wish. That's your discretion. Under your, under your district reserve policy, you've retained the discretion, discretion aside the merits of this decision.
Thank you, sir. Board, motions, comments?
Yes.
Chair Edwards, I have a few things, one and, I mean, or Mary, whoever.
Well, I would just like to move the discussion forward and make a motion that we deny the staff's recommendation and that we approve the project, adding the language of the city of Monterey indemnifying the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, and that we take the leadership role that we were elected to do.
Chair, I will.
Keep that in the motion.
Thank you.
Chair, this is Director Evans, I will second that motion, and I'd like to speak on the second.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So last year, when I brought up the idea of assisting our local jurisdictions with the district reserve, using the district reserve for affordable housing projects, this is, this is what I was hoping would happen. I know a lot of people say that water is a barrier to affordable housing, and, and yes, it is, but it is, of course, as we know, not the only barrier. But this project, this project, it's like a unicorn. Like, you never see 100% affordable housing here, and I'm excited about it. I recognize that we do have, you know, that this is possibly taking up a good chunk of our reserve, but that's why we have the reserve. And if we want to allocate that to affordable housing, this is, this is a good opportunity to use that. It does provide benefit community-wide, and I think that would be, you know, the entire region will see it. And then as other cities develop projects, similar projects that need reserve allocation, then we can consider those in the future. But this project, it's a no-brainer. It's not an issue for the, this conflict, this discrepancy at the state level, it's not, it's not for the district to resolve. I hear the State Water Resources Control Board person who is on the call tonight, I understand their position. In fact, it's, I think it's the most that I have heard from the State Water Resources Control Board in several years. So I'm appreciative of his sitting in on this call and talking to us about this. I just want to say that the community has done a great job in conservation. We've saved thousands of acre feet a year over the last several years, and a lot of that conservation is hardwired in. And I think that the five acre feet that this project needs is not going to be that big an impact when you've already saved 3,000 or nearly 3,000 acre feet a year. So I'd like our representatives at the legislature to take a look at this. I'd like the SB 330 and the State Water Resources Control Board to figure out their conflict and figure out a way that this is, this can go forward. So I, I'm fully in support of this project, and I agree that it is in our best interest to ask the city of Monterey for an indemnification, and for that, I'm fully behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I agree with what's been said by Director Evans and Director Adams. I think it is probably our place to also assist or be part of the conversation between State Water Resources and our representatives in the governor's office on the mandate that cities provide affordable housing. I mean, there's obviously a conflict, not everybody's understanding all of the parameters. So I think it would be important that we join many people that spoke, representing different organizations and agencies, and make it a concerted effort to resolve that conflict.
Thank you. Any other? Director Riley, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I'm really impressed with the presentations tonight, the, from the public. I think it's a huge cross-section of the community, and I'm glad that this Mr. Westbrook, Westkoff, was on the line as well. I think what's happened, at least in my mind, is that the state recently has declared affordable housing as kind of a statewide emergency or a crisis. And that's a recent declaration. And if we can't respond to something that's timely, and we kind of drag our feet and not be very timely ourselves, then I think we're being somewhat irresponsible for our own responsibilities. So I'm really supporting for this. I really want to ask the question whether we should also ask an indemnification from the developer? Is that a part of, that's not part of the motion, but should it be part of the motion? And then I'm, yeah, that's mainly it.
Yes, I have a couple of comments. I think we need to acknowledge that we do not have any water. I mean, ultimately, Calan is taking thousands and thousands of acre feet out of the Carmel River and trying to supply it illegally. And so this notion that we have water to allocate to folks, I think is misguided. I mean, the Carmel River is oversubscribed to water, the seaside basin is oversubscribed for water. This notion that there's this amount of water that's available, it's just a sight-of-hand And I would add that, you know, you're not a housing agency, and there's a process ongoing with the technical advisory committee to get input from all of the agencies within our jurisdiction about what the needs of water are. I mean, nobody's against affordable housing. I certainly am not, but I think there needs to be a logical, comprehensive approach to, if we, if, if there is water, which, I mean, that whole notion to me is sort of odd, but if there is an amount of water that somehow is made available, then it should be done on a basis that is not knee-jerk and ad hoc and just comprehensive. And like I said, there's no doubt that we need affordable housing, but let's take a word, reasonable approach. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Director Potter, you with us?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here.
Go ahead, any comments?
No, so I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. You know, I think this is an interesting opportunity to go ahead and provide affordable housing. I do think Director Adams, though, made a very good comment early on, is why is this in front of the allocation question asked in the next item? That's kind of a little bit of a cart before the horse here. But I'm going to support the motion that's there. I do think that one of the things we should do then is advocate for the Ledge Committee to take this up as a priority, to go ahead and argue the issue that I think perhaps it was Director Evans said, was if we're going to, if the state's going to mandate housing, they've got to give us some flexibility then, as far as water allocations go. So hopefully, we can make that argument at the state level through our Ledge Committee. I'd be happy to agendize that.
Great.
Thank you. I will not support the motion. I will not support it because we're a management agency and we're not a land-use agency, as to the city. One thing that we could have done, and I think the gentleman had the point, I prefer going to the state for a bigger, larger amount of water, where I can give everybody some water. I hate to talk about affordable housing or anything that got to do with land use. That makes it hard on me. It makes it hard. I know people need housing, but I'm not a land-use agency. I've sat on this board 14 years, and I don't speak of land use. You need water, you come ask, and we should go get it. But we shouldn't be saying, well, this water is good enough for affordable housing. This water is good enough for that. No, we give the acre, we give whatever the cities need. So I'm not in a land use business, so I will vote no on this, so we can move on.
Through the chair, this is Director Byrne.
Yes, ma'am.
We've had this discussion before about allocating it for a specific purpose, and I believe we should change the motion to say that we are willing to allocate the city of Monterey the five acre feet for whatever use.
Oh, now you're trying to get me to buy on.
But it's in line with our discussions previously, that we are not in the land use, and we have denied other things based on allocating water specifically for housing. So I think the motion needs to be changed to be that we're simply allocating the five acre feet to the city of Monterey for whatever use.
Amending motion.
Yeah, just for clarification, and this goes to the earlier question that both Director Potter and Director Adams raised, the reason we put these in the order that we did is the current status quo and the declaration of the board when the district reserve was reestablished was that the district board wanted discretion to make specific allocations of water, so if it was a zoo, or if it was base realignment, enclosure, protection for the military, or whatever it is, you'd have the discretion. So I think in this particular instance, you're not doing land use planning, it was an affordable housing item that came in front of you today, but you're just using your discretion to allocate that. If it were part of a more broad policy, I don't think we should be in the business of saying water is only available for these purposes and not those purposes, but under the discretion item. And they were put in this order so that you'd still have the status quo discretion to consider this item before you might do something to change that.
Thank you. Okay.
What is the most?
I'm the maker of the motion, and I, I really don't want to amend the motion.
Call for the question.
Call for the question. Roll call, please. Did we get Sarah back, or are we still on Arlene?
No, Sarah is, she's online. So, Sarah.
And to clarify, we are still voting on the original motion, correct? Not an amended one?
That's correct. The motion is to approve the proposed allocation with indemnification being required.
Thank you.
Arlene, will you take roll call?
Yes, yes, I will. Director Potter?
Hi.
Director Hoffman? Director Hoffman, how do you vote? Let me make sure that he is on... Should be, yes. Director Hoffman, how do you vote? Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
Hear me? Yeah, we can hear you, Director. Go ahead.
Director Hoffman, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you. Director Adams?
Aye.
And Director Edwards?
No.
Motion approved, five to two.
Motion approved, five to... Okay. To the board. It's 9:25. Do we continue or do you want to... Do you want to continue or do you want to call it a night and we'll continue all this to the next meeting?
Mr. Edwards, if I could chime in on one aspect about that? You have an item on your agenda yet to be heard, item number 16, Policy on Smart Water Meter Installation. And that is somewhat time-sensitive. We have a hearing, pre-hearing conference before the ALJ. We have settlement discussions. This policy discussion does influence those matters. You could choose to defer this. We would have to take a no position then until you do provide direction on the policy.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Hi, Supervisor Adams. What I would like to do is postpone items 14, 15, and 17. Here, item 16.
I second that emotion.
That is second. Question for your attorney, Mr. Laredo. Do we have any problems with infering any item?
I don't believe so.
I'm sorry, Director Hoffman, the connection was bad. I don't know what the motion was. Could it be repeated, please?
Yes, my motion is that we postpone items 14, 15, and 17, and that we hear item 16 now.
Okay.
And I believe there was a second to that motion.
But Mr. Laredo, any of these items that we're delaying, are they time-sensitive or anything?
I don't believe so. Mr. Stolt, do you believe that those are required?
Well, we thought maybe 15 needed action, but I know that we're still waiting on an approval from the state, so I think we can finesse it and carry it over one more month. We just don't want to lose the grant money.
Right. Okay. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to hear item 16. Call for the question. Roll call, please.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
I'm sorry. My bandwidth is going in and out.
The motion is to postpone items 14, 15, and 17, and to consider item 16 this evening. How do you vote, Ms. Director Hoffman? Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Hoffman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Adams?
Aye.
And Director Edwards?
Yes, yah.
A unanimous approval.
Thank you. All those items will be on the next agenda. General Manager?
Yes, so this item, item 16, as General Counsel pointed out, is related to our current testimony in the general rate case. Previously, there had been asked questions about when did this first come up? What do we know? I think I've covered that in the staff note. We have opened this or taken a step back a little bit. Previously, this was brought to you as to whether you wanted to adopt a position on opt-in or opt-out programs for AMI, which is advanced metering infrastructure. At this point, we would like you to reaffirm your position or the district's position on moving AMI programs forward. It was the recommendation of the Public Utilities Commission in 2016 to begin transitioning to advanced metering infrastructure. From the district's standpoint, we've always supported programs that gave greater control to the customer to know about its own consumption, its price signals, its usage, as well as the fact that if properly implemented, it can be used to reduce leaks, promote cheaper meter reading in the long run. We are not scientists. We've not made any judgment with respect to the health impacts for some people, some subset of our population. But taken on the whole and with all the other things that we have to deal with in this information society, staff's recommendation and what had been the original recommendation to you when talking about the approach the district would take to the general rate case was to support an AMI program in the Monterey District. And with that, I included 43 pages of CalAmp's testimony that I thought you might find interesting on some of the examples of meter reading spikes or other things that would be of interest to you.
Thank you, General Manager. Question from the board.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Director Adams.
Thank you. I see that we are going to be putting the cost burden on the customer that wishes to opt out. Is there any idea how much that cost will be?
Right. Yeah, so there is a calculation that will vary every year, but it's $70 upfront and monthly about 13. And that's the model that the electric utilities have utilized. And this was one of the questions, which is maybe you support it, but maybe you want our testimony to take a different tack with respect to who should pay.
Director Byrne, I have a question.
Go ahead, Director.
So can we split that so we could support opting out with deleting the $70, but leave the monthly fee intact? I mean, I don't think we have any control over that.
Yeah, I mean, all of this is just simply related to, you know, the company's belief is now we're going to have to make a trip out to read your meter because it's going to be an analog meter, and therefore, we need to be compensated for that additional cost.
That's the $13 a month.
Yeah.
But a gesture would be if we eliminated, if we supported eliminating the $70.
You can split this any way you wish. This is merely a position that you're advocating.
I have a question, Riley.
Go ahead, Director Riley.
I did read the testimony from CalAmp that you included, and thank you, Dave, and Dave for including all that. I went into the numbers quite a bit, and I'm just very disappointed in the CalAmp arguments. This is a $41 million installation over a two-year period and very little monitoring expense beyond that. So to charge ratepayers who opt out an excessive amount, weigh in excess of what the normal operating O and M cost would be, which I think is unfair. Second, the calculations within the CalAmp document suggest to me that our conservation program...
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
We're at questions at this point?
Got you.
Mr. Laredo for helping me out.
I'll come back with a question, I think.
Any other questions? Other questions, Arlene? Can we please take it out there to the public?
I see two hands raised, so I'm going to bring the timer up and we'll get started. Okay. John Tully, please present your comment. Did you have a comment, Mr. Tully?
No, I did not.
Thank you. Serice Folsom, please present your comment.
Hi, raising my hand for myself, Serice Folsom, and my father, Sean Folsom. I don't know if it's possible for each of us to have a comment, but if I could begin and just say that, you know, these smart meters often go very much over budget. We've had an experience in the past through PG&E whereby these smart meters were installed and they started off with, I think, a $500 million budget, and then they ended up going into the billions of dollars. These are very expensive meters that have a very short life in comparison to the analog meters. There's a number of issues that are involved with monitoring them. I actually think in many ways, even though I'm sure that this is a supposed labor-saving aspect that CalAmp is attempting to push through, that we may actually need more labor in order to service and maintain these meters and reinstall them over time. As I mentioned, they have a significantly shorter life than the analog meters have. And if and when we do purchase the infrastructure, the water infrastructure from CalAmp, these meters present a significant economic liability to the public that I think is unfair and significantly costly. And therefore, I urge the board to please take a position opposing these meters. I would also like to present the aspect and differing aspect that PG&E meters are often close to the house and present a lot of issues in terms of access. All of the CalAmp meters in my neighborhood are right out in front of the road and present no issues regarding access. Simply put, these meters are another exaggerated expense technology that is being foisted on the public. Please oppose these smart meters. That's the end of my comment. And if I may wield another three minutes to my father, Sean Folsom, I would very much appreciate it.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, sir. My name is Sean Folsom, and I've been a lifelong resident of Carmel Valley since 1956. And I've studied meters. I've studied the electromagnetic effects, 5G technology, very dangerous, but never mind, we need self-driving cars next. So here's the thing. I want a deal where if we opt out of this and they should not charge the ratepayer any money at all for the amount of money that we're being asked to outlay for this and the installation of little miniature transmitters everywhere. And 5G technology requires a transmitter about every 10 houses because it does not penetrate very well. Although I've been thinking about building a Faraday cage around my bedroom, never mind. Anyway, the essence of it is, is that I want to hear Mr. Riley's remarks because I really agree with him. He's looked at the numbers, and I think he's the go-to man on your board to comment on this. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Caller, I have unmuted your phone, so please identify yourself and present your comment.
Thank you. My name is Nina Beatty, Chair Edwards and Board of Directors. I'm asking you to oppose the CalAmp smart meter AMI rollout in the Monterey District in the current rate case at the CPUC. Tonight, you received a memo with errors and omissions from General Counsel Dave Laredo. My letters to you explain the severity of AMI problems, including inaccuracy, overbilling, malfunctions, and short lifespans, which require frequent expensive replacements. The system is very expensive for the customers, and the meters are a health and environmental hazard. And I'll repeat that. They are a health and environmental hazard. I showed you California Public Utility Code 7613D about your power to make rules regarding protecting the public health and the environment. CalAmp didn't tell the public about its current proposal to the PUC to roll out smart meters or the high costs, or that they began installing the smart meters about 2018 without getting authorization from the CPUC, which they were required to do. District staff supports smart meters but held no public hearing for the board to publicly discuss these. Tonight's hearing at the end of the meeting, under the present constraints with no contradicting presentation, is inadequate for this serious subject and the system expense. The customers they found in the PG&E meters don't use the portal. They don't use their data. And so this whole thing of the customers having control over their own use has been specious. The false readings are a problem for both AMR and AMI meters. Leaks should have been discovered and stopped years ago, but the high bills are continuing year after year, over $2 million every year that get bill credits. And many of those high bills are false readings. And when CalAmp wants a leak adjustment, it gets paid for water it never used. CalAmp lies about meter transmission of four to six times a day, as have other utilities. The spec sheet I sent you shows the meters transmit constantly. A rough cost of the system in just the Monterey District is $27 million, but actual costs have been double, triple, or in PG&E's case, almost five times the estimate. The long-term costs are not included, and purchasing these meters inflates their purchase price. I ask you to exercise your authority and require CalAmp to halt its smart meter installations in the district. Inform the public about these meters and require CalAmp to replace smart water meters with analog, non-digital meters for all who request it without charge. Oppose smart meters at the PUC in this rate case, and opt-out doesn't work. The public shouldn't be charged for a problem they didn't create. The AMI system is not smart or financially sound. Please exercise your authority as a watchdog empowered under state law and take this a health and environmental threat seriously. Stop these smart meters, and please include my letters in the next board agenda packet, which have all this information. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anna Thompson, please present your comment.
Yes, my name is Anna Thompson. I live in Carmel. Please oppose the installation of smart meters in the Monterey Water District and oppose any charge for opting out. Smart water meters not only are very expensive, but there are many problems associated with their operation. I don't think it is fair for the ratepayers to have to pay unnecessarily for something that is too expensive, that is not reliable, that has a short lifespan, that poses a health and environmental hazard, and that most of all provides no benefit whatsoever to compensate for the costs and risk that the ratepayers are forced to assume. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tammy Jennings, please present your comment.
Yes, hello, Tammy Jennings. I live in Monterey. I definitely applaud Ms. Beatty and the prior speaker. I can't remember her name. I agree with what they both said. I am a low-income... I am a low-income person, and $156, if you even deny the $70 opt-out fee, that's $156 a year for somebody that, for no water use whatsoever. So please, do not allow this. It's not right, and it's not needed for this time, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Susan Schivoni, please present your comment.
Thank you, Susan Schivoni Seaside. I just feel like this is a company that wants to, first of all, charge people twice for the privilege of this whole effort. If you don't want to be part of it, you're going to have to opt out and pay a fine, in effect, for not wanting to have something put into your home. I've had friends who had overcharges because of these meters and also excessive costs. I don't support it. I also see $17 a month on my water bill as a pretty high increase, over and above some other things that they're putting on already. I don't think this is a good idea, and I will not put one in, so I will be penalized. I will be punished by the CalAmp Water Company for not wanting to participate in this. I don't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Melody Christlock, please present your comment.
Melody Christlock, speaking as an individual. Very few people in this community realize what is about to hit them. I know CalAmp put a smart meter in for us a couple of years ago. We didn't even know it happened. But these are a new breed of smart meters with a lot of cell towers to make them work. I absolutely oppose this. I do not want access to this data at the expense of more radio frequency exposure. We've got enough around us already. Besides that, I totally agree with Nina Beatty. She's done her homework. She knows what she's talking about here. This is a dangerous thing, and the public isn't even aware yet of what this is about, and you're about to vote on it? This should be delayed and much more research before you take a position. I also am wondering, this is a really costly program. I mean, our share of it, between us and Venture, would be about $27 million. Is that a capital investment for CalAmp? I mean, is that what's going on here? Is, oh, this is another way that CalAmp can make money by putting in these meters? I mean, we're looking at trying to buy them out. Do we want to add another $27 million onto the cost right now? That doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I don't, you know, I was happy with my analog meter. It worked fine. You know, now I've got this digital one in the ground. But this is a different animal than the ones they're talking about. Neptune meters are a lot more powerful. There'll be little cell towers all over the neighborhoods. This is a bad idea. If you can stop it, please stop it now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chair Edwards, I see no other public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you, Arlene.
You're welcome.
Mr. Laredo, you up?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you don't have time to delay providing direction. This, the district has already weighed in based upon the direction that was provided during the summer of last year, 2019, in June and July. And testimony has been provided. We still have time to modify the district's position, but that time is very fleeting. That's why I ask that you continue with this discussion for tonight. Because if we, if the district does modify its position, that has to be communicated to the PUC in a very short fashion. Our original testimony has been lodged with the PUC, and we did provide testimony in support of CalAmp's proposal. That can be changed. It could be changed wholesale. It could be changed in part. You could approve the smart meter installation, but modify the cost-sharing provisions in whole or in part, as has been discussed. But I do believe that it is finally to do so now. Some of the comments, I know that Ms. Beatty is very passionate. We have disagreements in terms of some of the details. She is asking the, this district to take action that it frankly does not have the authority to take. She asks that this district halt the CalAmp's installation of those meters. It cannot. That is fully within the domain of the PUC. We can advocate, but we do not have the ability to do the cease and desist order that she's asked for. We do not have the authority to set the prices. We cannot tell CalAmp to replace the AMI meters that have already been installed. So that is beyond our authority. The scope of this discussion is what is the position that this district wants to espouse to the PUC?
Thank you, Mr. Laredo. More questions?
This is Director Byrne.
Go ahead.
I think one of the speakers had a good point in this kind of an investment when we're in the middle of assessing whether we should be buying them out. That was a very good point. And I wanted to put Director Riley was saying.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Director Riley, you want to?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I do. I do want to continue, and thank you, Dave Laredo, for correcting my timing. First of all, even if a full installation, every customer would have to ask to be informed of the information. It's in the document provided by the PUC, I mean, by the CalAmp technical expert, that it will enable customers to get this information. But they still have to register and ask for the information, so there's nothing automatic, even though it's installed. Another point. They've identified through their pilot project a category of meters that are five different categories. Four of those categories will need some treatment. But one of those categories are already AMI-compatible and would not require any new attention or change. That number represents 23% of the meters. This is according to CalAmp's own information. So they want to charge, you know, 75, 77% of the customers, I mean, they want to charge 100% of the customers that'll benefit, in their opinion, 75, 77% of the customers. And some of the customers, 23%, will not even have the benefit of what they're installing. That's on page 213 or in their testimony. Another thing. I looked at the samples, examples in Ventura and Monterey, as well as the city of Sacramento that they cited in their report. In all of those category of savings, the only savings they can identify are leaks. They can't identify any other benefit beyond that. They say there's potential benefit because you can kind of manage your water use. We already know what we need to do about water. We already know conservation. And this is an additional expense, huge expense, in order to manage the reduced use we already have. I did a calculation to show that the conservation program that we already have as a district can save 70 acre-feet per year. Their own, their own data suggests that they can save somewhere between 30 and 45 acre-feet per year. A $27 million investment to save half of what we already can prove that we save through the conservation programs and the rebate programs. I think this is a program that we should no longer support. I go back to our attorney's recommendation. We cannot act, there's no action that we can take to make something happen, but we can sure withdraw our support for the smart meters. Time and time again, they make reference to undetected leaks, undetected leaks. Hasn't that been a campaign for the last 10 years in this whole district? And they're going to superimpose another expense to do the same thing that we've been doing for 10 years? I think it's a waste. They talk about lessons learned. They do not cite, they do not, they not report any savings in meter-reader costs. They do not cite anything for that. But they do make a reference to more data collectors that may be needed to provide, to protect the system against damages. So I lose them in their lodging. The other thing I want to say is, and this is my last point.
Thank you.
This is on page 246. They cite a calculation on what it costs to justify the $70 opt-out and the $13. These are identical numbers to what the PG&E uses. $70 for an opt-out and $13 a month. These numbers look so phony to me. And you go down and look at the details, it is just impossible for me to believe that there's any credibility in those numbers. I just think they did the calculations in order to, I mean, they did the analysis in order to justify 70 and 13. I would hope that our district refuses to support this smart meter program anymore.
Director Riley, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, Vice Chair, your second, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, discussion.
I have a few discussion points or a few comments on the second chair. Thank you, Director Evans here. You know, I'm not, I'm not an expert in EMF items. I'm not an expert in meters. I don't understand the whole frequency or how a meter interacts with Wi-Fi interacts with other meters and all of that. I'm not saying there is or is not an issue with that because I don't know, and we have not heard from any experts in this. And I feel that by supporting smart meters that we are accepting that there is no risk from EMF radiation. And I think there may be. And there are people that have sensitivities to it, whether you, whether you know any or agree that that is a legitimate disability, is irrelevant. You can't deny their authenticity of experience. And I think that throughout, you know, everything that we do where there are accommodations for those who are disabled, that cost is borne by the owner. And I think that for those that do not want a smart meter, whether it is for a sensitivity, disability, or not, that cost should be borne by the owner and not by the individual. By forcing this kind of device on them without any scientific data to back up any health issues, I think is irresponsible of us to support that. So I also agree that we should withdraw our support for these meters. And not, we should withdraw our support for the meters. And if they do end up going forward with it, I think that we should advocate that the costs for opt-out be borne by the company and up by the users.
Thank you, Director Evans.
Director Edwards, are we in the comment period now, not question period?
Well, we got a motion, and we got a second. We're in discussion right now.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Having been a water utility manager and dealing with the transition to these meters, it's, for me, it's important to recognize that people have issues with the electromagnetic issues and sensitivities that they have. That being said, I go back to, I think, again, my bandwidth was going in and out what our council was mentioning, and that is what our jurisdiction is in this regard. And to that effect, CPUC and CalAmp. So I think that our weighing in on appropriateness or not appropriateness of the use of smart meters was beyond what our legislative mandate is and what our responsibility is as within the legislative intent of Water Management District. And again, I just don't want to downplay the concerns that, and the public health aspect that some folks have with respect to electromagnetic concerns. But again, at the same time, I think that's beyond the scope of what we should be weighing in on, and we should focus on our own mission. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Director Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd agree with Gary. My bandwidth is dwindening as we speak, given the length of the meeting. But I do think that my concern is more of the fiscal impacts to the users versus the EMF issues, which I'd agree with Director Evans. I'm not qualified to comment on. But fiscally, I'm concerned about the impact, so I will support the motion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Laredo, what kind of trouble we getting there? Oh, Arlene, I'm muted.
I just.
Thank you, sir.
This district has submitted testimony, but I believe that we still have the ability to modify that. We have reasons, if you support this motion, we have reasons to articulate as to why it's being changed. We'll try to do it in such a way that does not harm our credibility. It will, it'll take a bit of a hit. Anytime you enunciate a position and modify it, that does take away from your credibility. But I believe that we have reasons to justify this.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Final thought. I recognize that our council says that our credibility will take a hit. But I think that if we do not act with more information, when more information changes what has been thought of in the past, then I think, then I think we have no credibility. So if we gain information that enables us or directs us to change our opinion, and we don't do it because we're afraid somebody will be offended that we changed our opinion, I think that that ruins our credibility even more. So just wanted to throw that out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Evans. Okay, let's call for the question.
All right. Director Adams. I'm sure she is unmuted.
Arlene, could you restate the motion, just for clarity?
Yeah, the motion is that we do not support installation of smart meters. I mean, that was the exact wording.
We do not support smart meters. Aye, just like I said, aye.
Thank you.
Inclusion of not charging for opting out, part of that motion?
I thought it was.
I was thinking it was.
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
So George, when you made the motion, did you include that in? Or would you like to amend your motion to?
Not specifically, but I accept the amendment.
Very well.
Could you restate the amendment for me, please?
Withdraw our support for smart meters, including the cost to, what's the phrase? Opt-outs, including the cost for opting out.
Okay. All right, I will, then, Mary Adams, how do you vote on that amended motion?
Aye.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Hoffman? Director Hoffman, how do you vote?
Yes, I'm sorry. I just need clarification on actually what the motion says. The amended motion?
That we do not support installation of smart meters and that we do not, including the cost for opting out.
Okay, so including any. Okay, so including any charges to individuals who want to opt out?
Yes.
I don't want to make the motion myself, I'm just trying to understand what the intent here is.
If, Director Evans, if I may, what I, I think Director Hoffman, and I apologize for putting words in your mouth, but I think when I heard that we are withdrawing our support for the installation of smart meters, including the cost for opting out, it does sound like we're withdrawing our support for the cost of opting out, and I don't think that is the intent of the motion.
I'd agree.
I think that was the intent, we would not support a cost to the customer for opting out.
But we would not withdraw our support for including the cost of opting out.
If I may add, and with the agreement of the second, remember Byrne, my motion was to withdraw our support for smart meters and withdraw our support for an opting out charge.
Okay, I have clarity on that. I don't know if that helped anybody else, but thank you.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes, that's perfect.
Yeah, Director Riley, so basically what you're saying is we withdraw our support for AMI technology during this rate case until further notice, but if it moves forward without us, that we do not support the ratepayer having to foot the bill for the opt-out payment?
Yes.
Okay.
If somebody could just state the motion then, totality for me, that'd be helpful.
We withdraw? I can state it very simply, but.
If I could try it, that the district withdraws its former position of support for the AMI program, and if the program does continue, that the district withdraws support for any opt-out charge against the consumer.
That sounds right.
Sounds right.
That's the clarification I would like, Director Riley. That captures the intent of the motion?
That was the motion, yes.
Thank you.
So Director Hoffman, how do you vote? Director Hoffman, how do you vote?
No.
No, thank you.
Fucking asshole.
Director Potter, how do you vote?
Aye, no expertise.
Thank you, sir.
Director Byrne, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Riley, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Director Edwards, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you.
So Director Byrne, I have one more question.
Oh, that is all closed.
In the statement, or the restatement of that, George's original motion was to oppose the installation of AMI. And the clarification was that we withdraw our support for AMI. Is that, are those one in the same motion?
Mr. Laredo?
My understanding that this is one in the same motion.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Mr. Laredo, I got you on there. Do we continue the meeting? Start all over?
If you have a date to continue this to, that would be the most convenient to continue it to a date certain. If not, you can adjourn, and we'll set the new agenda.
Okay. Jim, you want to continue this until the 15, or do you want to set a new agenda?
No, I believe we can carry this to the next regular board meeting.
Under comments, if I might, I think this agenda's been a little cluttered, honestly. So maybe we could kind of agendize it to where we realize we can only accomplish so much in the five hours we allocated tonight for this meeting. And so if there's other items that are pressing, could we get a little assessment on what time management looks like when we set the agendas? I'd appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes, and you're correct. I went a little aggressive this time, blame it on me. So I went a little aggressive, but I'll be less aggressive the next time.
I'd appreciate that, as I'd appreciate that, as I think my colleagues would too, I would hope. Maybe we could get one more unanimous on that tonight.
I appreciate that, Director Potter.
Yes. So.
Mr. Chair, if I could offer a suggestion that we get from, that we do at the Board of Supervisors. We assess the number of people who are going to be making public comment, and we determine at that point whether they will have two minutes or three minutes to speak. So that might be something that we could consider in the future.
Yes, good idea. But when I posted, when Arlene posted up there, we have three minutes on there. And I hate to change that and say we're going to two minutes. So I will look at that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Anything, Jim? Okay, mean the term.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you all. Thanks, Arlene.
Thanks, Arlene.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.